Book Planning Board Meeting, October 28th, 2014, and a reminder that we are audio and videotaped, so if you speak, please use the microphone and identify who you are. And with that, we will get started with Winding Hollow.
I believe we need Mr. McLean here for a quorum of four to be able to proceed with our hearing.
This is a special permit?
I missed a hearing but saw it on video.
Okay.
But I'm the associate anyways.
Right. And I think Mr. Palumbo missed a hearing also.
Does that count towards our quorum?
Does a special permit affect things?
It's for special permit for the open space.
Can associate count?
In a special permit.
You can have a special permit.
So we can go forward since you watched it on. But it's not a standard? It's not also a standard? It's not both at the same time?
Um, this is a preliminary subdivision review and an open space special permit hearing.
So I can't vote on the preliminary.
No, but you only need three for that.
Oh, okay. So either way, we're okay?
So we have a quorum of both parties?
So we're okay. We're okay if you're okay.
Do you want to continue?
So you do have the four out of five of them for this special permit?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Here with me this evening is the owner, Mr. Tom DePlacido. I do have some plans here that I'd like to pass out to the members. I may?
So that case in two where it's jarring.
Thank you.
We have some lodgers in. Table.
But then you fall back. If you have a special case. For the ones visually challenged. That's all you can do.
Oh, God, can I tell you stories about that?
Thank you.
Plans are coming in now electronically. You can either read them or you can get them to scale, but you can't have both.
We can share.
It's time to offer selling to a young crowd.
Okay, you got me.
Okay. Since our last meeting, we put together a layout, plans for grading for a proposed roadway that would enter at the approximate location of the existing driveway. We have also that connector sidewalk from the Pondview Road area running along the frontage, terminating in this area here. It would be a grading that would be necessary.
Is your mic on? Big green light? Yeah? Green light's on?
Try it now, see.
Is that better? Oh, okay. Sorry.
Speak up.
Okay, so as I was saying, we proposed the sidewalk from the Pondview entrance down along the frontage, terminating here at the 100-foot buffer zone. And as you can see, the associated grading that would be necessary to create that sidewalk is extensive, approximately 22,000 square feet and approximately 7,500 cubic yards of material for excavation to put the sidewalk to the north side of the existing roadway. We did have the opportunity to have a site walk with Mr. DePlacido, Ray, and Bob McGee to look at, you know, various options here, the sidewalk option. And it was suggested at the site walk that it may be more appropriate to run sidewalk from Pondview down and terminate at the entrance to the subdivision and avoid the grading that would be necessary here and disturbance to the tree line, the existing trees, excuse me. So we wanted to discuss that with the board this evening, see how the board felt about this proposal for the lot configuration, the grading, the drainage, et cetera. I will say that this proposal for the roadway and drainage system and whatnot is approximately 10,000 cubic yards of material. I mean, it's not been figured definitively, but it approximates 10,000 yards, which is a regulation of the board.
Being removed?
Excuse me?
Being removed?
Being removed, yeah. And that would be without the 7,500 for the sidewalk. So it would be 17,5 approximately if we were to do the sidewalk work. Just to give you an idea, I know that was a concern of some of the members as to what the quantities would look like. This roadway comes in at a 2% grade up to a high point and then begins to drop off. Allowed us to put a detention basin here, which would require waivers as well, setbacks to the roadway into the open space sidewalk entrance. Sidewalk to terminate here into access to the open space area. You can see the proposed tree line that encapsulates the lot areas, leaving a natural buffer here, preserving a natural buffer here as well. No disturbance to any of the wetland resource areas would be proposed, including the 100-foot buffer zone. So we feel that that would certainly be a benefit. So we wanted to get some input from the board with respect to this proposal.
Well, I went out and looked at the site and I'm going to withdraw my request that I made at the last meeting to sort of mitigate the site damage on that hill. That hill is so extensive, removing 20,000 cubic yards to me would be punitive and still wouldn't help much. It's just, it's overbearing, so I don't see any need to even get into that. It's just way more than I expected when I stood there and looked up. I don't see how you could do it.
Yeah, it would be very challenging.
Reasonably. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I withdraw that.
Yeah, but we did look at it and we wanted to show the board.
I appreciate that, so did I. But to the left of the cul-de-sac, the sidewalk going to the left of the roadway.
Yes.
Does that service any houses on that side?
It would service.
No, I'm sorry, going on along Holbrook Street, Rick.
Down here?
Yeah, are any houses serviced if you had a sidewalk there?
Not really. I mean, nothing from.
Okay. Not in that side of the street, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that really makes it even more so that removing a mountain like that and still having a mountain after you remove it doesn't seem worthwhile at all, you know?
There are houses across the street, right?
There's a few across the street.
I was wondering if you wanted to go there.
Yeah. The hill is just, it's nothing I've seen like in town. And if they took out 20,000 yards, you'd still have a cliff, a hill of a peak to have somebody fall off. And the site distance really is negligible that you change. It's just, it's that big.
Well, that last point is a question. If you were to do that, what would the improvement in the site distance be on that corner?
Minimal. You're rarely looking at a five-foot grass strip from the edge of pavement to five feet further sidewalk. So you're basically pulling the slope back 10 feet.
Yeah.
You're not really going to affect the site distance much at all.
Rick, have you had an opportunity in understanding that this is a preliminary plan, but have you had the opportunity to look at other site distance issues along, in the vicinity of the subdivision roadway and other things you believe you can do with a reasonable level of effort to improve site distance?
Yeah, we've looked at the site distance triangles. Heading here towards the west is rarely no issue, minimal, you know, clearing of some low-level brush. But to the east, towards Pondview, we have showed some grading in here to improve the site distance. There's basically an elevation of two or three feet coming up off the roadway that would need to be regraded back to allow for that site distance triangle looking to the east.
I think the definitive plan should probably include a profile of that road so we can evaluate it a little.
Yeah, we've done a profile of the site distance triangles. We could certainly do the road as well.
Thank you.
Physically measured it as well, so we'd have both.
That is, obviously, everybody knows it's a really tight road. Did you look at the possibility in your walk of having a crosswalk here and putting a sidewalk to the houses on the other side? I'm trying to remember how many houses we're talking about, but it seems that if we're going to have development, the development is on the other side and won't be on this side.
We did talk about that. I'll defer to Rick to explain.
Yeah, basically, the roadway right-of-way is 33 feet with approximately 18 to 20 feet of pavement. And the pavement somewhat hugs the opposite side of the roadway, leaving about five or six feet between the edge of the pavement and the edge of the right-of-way on the abutting, on the opposite side of the roadway. So any sidewalks down in this area here, you'd rarely be looking at land takings unless you had, you know, a straight-up curb and a sidewalk.
The other issue that we talked about was tree cutting. There's a few substantial trees on that side of the road, too. And in order to get the sidewalk down that side of the road, you'd have to cut those trees. And we know that some of the neighbors were against having any tree cutting done in that area, and so we were sensitive to that in thinking about, you know, where we can put sidewalks. Can you tell the planning board what Bob McGee was talking about in terms of getting a sidewalk from the neighboring subdivision and down to this subdivision?
Yes, basically, there's a sidewalk on the west side of, excuse me, Pondview Road currently, terminates at the intersection. We would pick up from that handicap ramp and run it along the frontage of this property here and then along our frontage, and we could terminate it at our roadway here. There are two existing driveways right about here, Andrea, that service two houses. Then there's an existing driveway here and here, which obviously could get across the roadway to the sidewalk.
Don't you remember those people speaking about school bus stops here?
Yeah.
We're going to put in the cul-de-sac. Yeah, we're going to change.
Bringing the bus and stopping here at the right of the corner intersection.
Yeah, I think a school bus could now traverse Holbrook Street into the roadway, make the loop, come back out, and be an ideal spot here for a school bus stop so that the kids would be exiting on the subdivision roadway at a sidewalk location.
Without any improvements.
Right.
What's the land after those houses? Is it a long, narrow strip? Is it developable?
Just tell me something. Do you have that other sketch ready by any chance?
The corner that, she said the corner that we were talking about last time.
This is the Trout Club property on 115.
No, 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 I know that.
On this side.
Yeah, the other side.
Remember, you were talking about making the walking trail through last time?
Actually, we're going to get to that in a minute.
Do you have a copy of that plan, that sketch you did?
Yes.
We're actually going to show you that, too.
Good.
If there's no more questions on this.
For the record, Tom DePlacido, the owner of the land and developer. If the board's comfortable with looking at this plan right now, as a result of our meeting out there, myself and Mr. Goodrow, the town planner, and the DPW director, we were asked to look at, as we started talking and things, maybe trying to improve this curve in the road here. I do own the land across the street here. And what it looks like if trying to improve this site distance and things and trying to maybe do something down to 115, instead of a sidewalk, it was brought up, maybe look at connecting the road down through here. And what that offers is.
Eliminate that upper part?
So actually, just to associate everybody, we did some work down in this area, putting an island in and defining this intersection. And about a year, year and a half ago. And, I mean, this is very, very wetland-oriented down here. There's a stream and things like that. And what the potential was is just, they said, look at this, maybe coming down through here, we're doing the, we're going to propose a sidewalk, maybe bring the roadway through here, and maybe that could potentially put a sidewalk or something along down here to 115. There was just different variations here we looked at. This is, it does require some extensive work. We would have to shift this road over a little bit. We do get into that hill a little bit. Rick could talk about that somewhat. And there would be some wetlands filling in here, too. So, I mean, this isn't a slam dunk by any means or anything like that. There's some, really, some work that would have to be involved with this engineering-wise and looking quite a bit more deeper into it.
What's the change in elevation there from where the current road is down to 115? It's significant, isn't it?
It is, it is quite steep. This plan was actually done by Coler and Colantonio for the DPW, for Mr. Vito, some time ago, the plan that you're seeing here. They had looked at this, you know, alternative layout, trying to straighten that out. Mr. McGee brought that to our attention, and we went down to his office, obtained a copy of it, and then, you know, looked at this. And yes, you are correct. It is a pretty steep grade change from roadway to roadway. Actually goes up slightly here and then down into the wetland area and then back up a little bit to Holbrook Street. We haven't assessed, you know, profile of that roadway, but I would estimate about an eight to 10-foot, maybe 12-foot elevation change in through here from one to the other.
Over, over a couple hundred feet?
150, 200 feet, yeah.
How does that compare to the curve on Holbrook Street that remains in terms of height change?
This area here, this curve approximates a 12% grade.
It brings in another interesting dynamic because where the town abandoned the well
site behind Tommy's proposed subdivision, because the Fish and Game Club would not allow to make that radius of 100 feet by giving up land, there was talk about approaching them and where this parcel is going to be just all by itself, giving that to the Fish and Game Club in a swap for enough land to get a radius to put a town well in. So that was the other dynamic that was going on at the same time.
Yeah, we actually.
That you were part of?
Yeah.
You were part of that discussion?
Yep.
Part of this discussion, but the ultimate trade-off, I think, would have to be done by the town and stuff. But, Rick, this is the next step, I guess you'd say. This is developing a plan to protect the well site, a potential well site.
So what we have here is we've tried to incorporate everything from the Coler and Colantonio plan, the well site, and the various parcels. And what we've done is gone back to some street front lots along Holbrook Street, incorporated a short roadway here, which would provide access for five houses. Four houses would have access to Holbrook Street. Incorporated roadway and in the approximate location from the Coler and Colantonio plan, we've shown the 400-foot well radius that would be necessary for a well site here. And what we've done is hatched out an area here, approximately 92,381 square feet that would be necessary from the Fish and Game Club. And with an abandonment of the Holbrook Street layout and the remaining parcel here, there would be 106,593 square feet available for a land swap. So if the Fish and Game Club was amenable to this, they would actually gain 14,000 square feet of land area and then have control over this area here, the frontage.
Includes the roadway?
Correct. Correct.
So it's fully contiguous?
Correct. This hatched area includes the existing roadway layout and then this parcel, and they would then have ownership to where they do now, continue right out to 115.
Have they been approached?
No, they have not.
Their concern, as I recall, had to do with a potential interference with their trout ponds and that might incur from the well. I don't know. I guess it's worth asking.
Well, you know, this all came about relatively short period of time here at the end, and Tom asked us to look at that, look at this and incorporate everything into one sketch so we could, you know, show it to the board, get your feeling if the board was amenable to this idea, and we could have further discussions with Mr. McGee, who could then, you know, potentially approach the Fish and Game Club and see what their feeling would be on this. I did speak with Mr. McGee regarding this. He did get a copy of this, and he thought it, you know, certainly could change things with the land swap. But you are correct, you know, the Trout Club was concerned about the impacts to the ponds.
Things are trade-offs, you know? I mean, we had discussed, when we talked about this originally, the benefit to the town of having that well is tremendous. It does come with a few compromises, though. I mean, some of those driveways going out on that corner there really present a.
Well, the corner's kind of flattened.
I think what's going to happen is, in reality, if you build these houses in this area.
Yeah.
You're going to take down this hill and then push the slope back. So you're going to do some earthwork.
Significantly, yeah.
But you're also going to improve the site distance lines through the front yards.
Yep.
And then you certainly would have the potential to look at a sidewalk, so.
The sharp radius on that new road there, could that be flattened at all to mitigate the slope? And maybe it would cut into the 100, whatever it is, 1,000 square feet, a little bit, but you still got, you've got 10,000 square feet to play with before you come to an even trade-off with the.
Flattened this way or made larger?
Yeah, that one, yeah. Particularly the last leg as it gets down towards Rockwood. Could it come out more on the northerly part of Rockwood as opposed to where it is now? Let me walk over and describe it.
More in this direction, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think really what we would need.
Well, it's going in at a 90% now.
Correct.
90 degrees.
90 degrees, yeah.
Because Butch is always what Butch is looking for.
Correct.
So I don't know, doing it like that.
4,000 something.
Yeah, I think we need some topography in the wetlands in that area to really know what we're dealing with.
Over and above the wetland, I think that we have nowhere near the information that we would need to give you any guidance with respect to that new roadway alignment. You know, a sharp horizontal curves with a very steep vertical gradient, and it'll get steeper maybe if we try to put a leveling area in. It's inherently problematic. I mean, it, not to say that it can't be engineered, but to look at it and sort of guess and have you go off and spend detailed engineering dollars on it, I think we're not, we need to really understand what this thing is going to look like. It may not be advisable at all.
Correct. It's preliminary at best, you know, but I believe the next step would be for discussions with the DPW and the Trout Club. Obviously, the engineering issues of the roadway would need to be worked out from the wetlands perspective, you know, the grading perspective, et cetera. So we're not asking for a blessing on this, per se. We're just looking, should we move forward with this with respect to the DPW, the wetlands issues, and maybe some additional engineering to, you know, see if it does in fact work. There's quite a few balls in the air that need to be resolved.
As I told you, Rick, my suggestion was to first talk to the Fish and Game Club, see if they're amenable. I mean, the town could take it by eminent domain, but I don't think that's their interest. But to me, everything becomes worthwhile if that could be the third town well, because what the map show from the water superintendent, this is by far the best spot in town that they've found in the last six, seven years, where there could be a well that could supply a good portion of the town, actually be one of the main wells. The issue, like everything else, is money. And as you know, the first preliminary test, the short-duration test with DEP, cost in the range of 30,000 to 35,000. It would be nice if that test was able to be done to see if this is as powerful as they think. After that, there's another test that's around 100,000, that's a long duration with a bigger pipe, and that pretty much ensures that this could be doable, then the process starts. But if you and the town could come to terms and see if they can find the money to do that test, and if the Fish and Game Club acquiesces for a land swap, to me, it would make a lot of this, a lot of the obstacles a lot more worthwhile. I mean, but out the well, to me, it's a waste of time out the well. I think it's to everybody. But if the well were potential, and if that first test, can't they also, Rick, tell the minerals in the water to see what the content is, even though it's a short-duration test?
I believe they can sample as well and see what the quality of the water is.
They can tell a lot from that. So the question would be, see if the town can find the funding to work that out as long as the Fish and Game Club agrees. That would be my thoughts.
I can't see all the property lines. You say that there are five lots around that cul-de-sac that you've got. How short is that cul-de-sac?
We're five.
This cul-de-sac is about 210 feet.
Is that?
250 is the minimum.
Yeah, we've got a 250-foot minimum.
It would be a waiver request. We've actually, you know, made the cul-de-sac as small as possible, you know, to accommodate the well radius, provide access, you know, for houses. You know, we'd be looking at reducing some of the infrastructure, you know, the width, the diameter, you know, trying to work with everybody, but trying to minimize that as much as possible. But, you know, in previous discussions where we had nine lots, the concern was the driveways out on the Holbrook Street, so we tried to incorporate that up in this area into, you know, five lots, minimizing driveways to five lots onto Holbrook Street.
So the last we heard from Bob, we had talked about that initial study, and we had talked about a date, and I thought that was all moving forward. Does anyone have an update on where that's at?
Well, the Fish and Game Club wouldn't allow them land to make the radius work.
So they just didn't even do the study?
Correct.
They just abandoned the idea?
Yep.
You can't, you can't get a waiver on the 400 feet. You have to have 400 feet.
Right. It looks like this would.
That's why the first step would be to talk to them and see if they want to do a swap.
It's, you know, you can't, you can't not look at it if it's a possibility.
Right.
I don't know why they're still not looking at it.
No?
Yeah, so if you don't, if you don't mind, if you don't mind having that discussion, that'd be.
I mean, potential well sites that could be as viable as this really don't come around that often. I mean, it seems shameful just to overlook it and just keep going. I mean, as I mentioned before in prior meetings, if we're going to take a couple of weeks or something and give the DPW a chance to talk with the Fish and Game Club, I mean, it should probably be the DPW and the town administrator, I would believe. I would think it's that important to try to work something out. I mean, we can give them the additional land and compensate them on that end, and hopefully, you know, something could be put together with it. So I think it's worthwhile to have that discussion if the board thinks that this is a plan that has some possibilities and things. If the board doesn't think that it's worthwhile, then, you know, then we won't even pursue it. But it's, being that close to having a potential well site with a 400-foot radius around it, I think is something it should pursue. Well, how many waivers would you be looking for for this? I mean, the waiver for the cul-de-sac, I can understand the waiver for the cul-de-sac if it's going to give us a potential well site. But what else is there along here that you could see that we're not seeing right now that you'd be coming in and asking for?
With respect to the open space, lots are supposed to access off a proposed roadway, so there'd be four lots that would be accessing off of Holbrook Street. That would be a waiver. The cul-de-sac length and width?
Yep.
We could certainly look at, you know, pavement reductions, trying to minimize that, work through that with the board, you know, probably one sidewalk. I would anticipate that we would exceed the 10,000-yard threshold to grade off this area here, but I think you would then be able to put the sidewalk in and make the connection, and you would greatly improve the site distance through this area here.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, you know, there's some trade-offs to some of these potential. The cul-de-sac length and width, we could certainly look at, you know, pavement reductions, trying to minimize that, work through that with the board, you know, probably one sidewalk. I would anticipate that we would exceed the 10,000-yard threshold to grade off this area here, but I think you would then be able to put the sidewalk in and make the connection, and you would greatly improve the site distance through this area here. So, I think, you know, there's some trade-offs to some of these potential waiver requests that seem to make sense. I mean, everyone who's driven this knows minimal site distance there, you know? The way to really address that is to take the hill back. With that comes declaring and the soil removal. So, if you're gonna do it for the purposes of constructing the houses and preserving the well and improving the site distance and sidewalks, is it worthwhile?
You said there was a, you said that it is, you didn't have a chance to look at the plan drawn by the other professional engineers, but that you anticipated it was going to rise up, dip down, and then come back up. So, is there the ability to use any of the fill nearby, reducing trucks, and is it a significant amount?
Right now, the problem with this plan is the contours are not labeled.
Oh.
So...
You don't know if it's going up or down?
Well, we know this is going down, and we've, you know, anticipated that it's coming, and have seen it in the field. There's a little bit of a hill here, and then it drops off pretty steeply in this area here. So, the question is, you know, how do you make the road grade work? This area is obviously gonna be a fill area here. They've shown, you know, approximate area of the toll, the slope out in this area here, which indicates to me, you know, they were looking at cutting some here and filling in these areas here to create the embankments for the roadway. But without the numbers and guessing, it's somewhat difficult to see exactly what's going on.
And how large is the wetland?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted, did you, you said there was also a wetland in the right-of-way?
Correct.
Is it, is it an isolated, is it a bordering?
Bordering, bordering vegetated wetland. There is the river that runs through this area. Not really shown.
There's no limited project for roadways?
The approach to the Fish and Game Club could be kind of conceptual until that final roadway design is complete, because the number of square feet you would trade off really couldn't be known until you finalize the design of the road.
Correct.
That's correct.
But I mean, it sounds like it would be at least even, or maybe a little gain on their part.
Yeah, I believe so. At this point, you know, above 14,000 square feet in excess if we had to, you know, take some of that for the road.
There's a lot of issues, but I think it's well worth it with that site to be a well. Appreciate you folks, you know, taking the time and working with the town to see if this could possibly work. I know it's easy for you just to get approvals for cul-de-sac and build the houses and move on, but it's appreciated that you're at least looking into this, giving the town a chance to decide, see what they wanna do.
So, I think we could meet with Mr. McGee next and formulate a plan, a meeting with the trout club, and looking at some of these other issues.
Yeah, we have to find some way to deal with the fact that the open space subdivision though is, you know, it all has to be off of subdivision roads, that you can't have A and R lots being part of an open space subdivision.
Do you lose if you change this to a conventional subdivision?
Sorry, what?
Do you lose if you change this to a conventional subdivision?
We'd lose...
You'd lose lots.
But we'd still have the nine lots.
So, you could abandon the open space plan, which has different limitations, and make it a conventional plan.
Correct.
Oh, with the, with the short...
Not with the shorter cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay.
We have a much, much more extensive roadway system. You know, if we were to, if we were to propose, we have a preliminary plan with the roadway system, you know, comes in in this location here roughly, to a cul-de-sac with the second road out.
Right, I remember that.
You know...
Now, I'm, I was talking about trying to sort of have a conventional with, with the well site being able to fit in there, but it probably won't.
No, no, no. These lots are roughly 20,000, over 20,000 square feet. We'd need 35,000 additional square feet times nine, just to, just to meet the zoning requirements.
Would you divide the lots and make the four of them into the A and R lots, and then leave the other one as its, an open plan? You're too small.
They wouldn't be able to have the reduced-size lots out on Holbrook Street. They would have to be conventional-sized lots, because they can't be part of the subdivision.
You could relay out Holbrook Street, say widen it by five feet, and it therefore becomes a subdivision roadway, it's a roadway approved under the subdivision control law.
Whoa, whoa. Did you catch that?
No, I didn't.
Improve Holbrook Street, make it a subdivision road.
I've been doing this too long. You, if you added five feet to the width of the right-of-way of Holbrook Street and submitted that under the subdivision control law, Holbrook Street then becomes a subdivision street. You could have reduced lots on it.
I'd wanna double-check on that, but it sounds really good.
Well, you know, it's a new objective, but it's a path the board could take, and there may be some risk of an appeal, but the subdivision controller allows the board to lay out streets in addition to conventional subdivisions under the same subdivision control law process. So, my judgment would be, if you relay out a street, and particularly if you change the right-of-way, under the subdivision control law, that becomes a quote-unquote subdivision street as the zoning bylaw refers to it.
Pretty marvelous.
It is.
And if we can get a well out of this...
Yeah, well, that's just it.
So, every single member has said...
Keep going.
We can get a well out of this. We've got some flexibility.
Yeah. Well, obviously, I mean, the well is the driving factor, you know, the potential well. But that's great.
Because you can't expect us to ever say, you know, wonderful things about those back lots otherwise.
No, no, no.
Okay, that's understood.
We've been around long enough, and we're not even gonna bring that forward.
Yeah, okay. No.
Oh, yeah, well, we just have to wait until we're done with the, with the board here before we, we open it to the public. But is there anyone else that has any questions here? Are we all done?
All done.
Steve, do you yourself have any questions? Did you miss the first five minutes?
No, I'm all set. I remember the, they've been here twice before, so I remember what was going on before, and I sort of caught up as I, as I sat here, so, okay. If you're, I'm gonna open it up to the public. If you have any comments or questions, please identify yourself and, for the record.
Ben Rogers, 12 Holbrook Street. Lived there my whole life so far. I'm also a member of the Board of Governors at the Trout Club, and I'm glad to hear somebody say that they're actually gonna come and communicate with us. I find it hard to believe that it's gone this far.
Well, this is the first time that anyone's said anything to us, so it may have just, it may not be that old an idea to them either.
Well, I remember a planning board meeting where it was presented back in the end of July, I think it was the 29th.
We got a letter from, from the Trout Club, so somebody approached them, and...
No, that was the letter I dropped off, just saying that we really don't want this. We have an access road in there with, goes into a stream where we raise fish. It's a preliminary thing that we've started doing just the past couple of years, and if this goes in with the land-taking, we will lose that road.
Now, where is this road?
It's down, right next to the stream that comes in, fills our pond.
Where is it on this map? Could you...
It's an old cart road.
This is the edge of the river here.
Yeah, it goes in right around here, or...
I can't see through him, so I don't know what he's pointing to.
Oh, is that that one that's right on the edge of where the, the cross-hatched land is?
It's not your driveway, right?
No, our driveway into the club is off of 115.
Right.
The Upland Game Club sign is out there. We don't advertise ourselves. We like to be quiet.
Would a different access road be made?
No, not if they take that land.
Because it's otherwise wet?
Yep. And then we'd be dealing with conservation and, difficulty at best. My mother was on conservation in 1965 through 70, so I know what it's like.
Wow, founding member.
I've been here since, my family's since 51. And Betsy's mother is the only one that's older than me on the street by one month.
If you could get a different access road, would it be worth talking?
It would be difficult. I don't know how we could get a road in there. It would probably have to come in through Christina Estates, and that's not gonna happen. And I'm just down here to express that the Board of Governors is not in favor of us losing any land, losing, trading, whatever. And as somebody who's driven Holbrook Street my whole life, I've never had a problem with that corner. So, I don't know if anybody has questions for me. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm here representing myself.
You can see the potential benefit to the town for an additional well where we've been looking for one for six or seven years.
I understand there's a need for a well, but I think there's many other places in town, and I've heard other conversations of, you know, the Rentham Developmental Center, they are 200,000 gallons a day under capacity. The other well sites in town for redundancy. And I'm just not sure how sticking another municipal well between the Milliswell Site and Gold Street, which are within a mile, plus Tom's Well at the Village at River's Edge, there may be difficulty just getting that approved by the state.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Comments also? Well, you guys have a partial answer, but it's not, not set in stone. What would you like to do next? You wanna go see if you can advance this a little bit with them?
Yeah, I think we need some time to do that, just check with Tom as to what you'd like to look for a timeframe, maybe two weeks and...
If we continue for two weeks and if we're ready, we can come back and update the board or if nothing's happened, we can just ask for continuation.
That, could I just ask you, that cart path, is that off of the existing Holbrook Street?
Yes, it is.
Oh, well, the existing Holbrook Street would all become part of the Trout Club's land anyway. That would all be the existing part beyond that where the new road comes off.
Would roads be discontinued?
Yeah, the road is gonna, yeah, the road down towards the end is all gonna close.
So, how would we gain access?
You can still gain it from where the old Holbrook Street is now.
The cart road is within the 400-foot access.
Yeah, see, that's a broad...
The 400-foot radius.
No, no, it is, it is.
What's, what's wrong with giving the town enough land for radius and maintaining a permanent easement for access on that cart path?
You, they have to have total controls, my understanding.
I think that's maybe something we should check into. I don't think a cat, a cart path that's insignificant for anything else but fishing, and it might not work there. It's worth looking into.
Absolutely, and obviously, there's gonna be an access road for the well itself, you know? So, certain things are allowed in there to service the well. It could need a second piece of access that could be shared.
They own it, release it back for dollar a year of...
Would need to be looked into.
Well, it's an access road for maintenance purposes. This doesn't seem that much different.
I think you folks should check into that more clearly. You, sir, what I would suggest to you, what was your name? I'm sorry.
Ben.
Ben, I would suggest you talk to Phil down at the DPW. All of these well sites that you just mentioned, they've done extensive work already on those, and you should check out and find the status of those, because it's not like they've ignored those and their options. They've been looking at those things for years, as much as I know, and everything is still fallen flat. But this thing geologically seems up, at least on paper, to be a home run, a huge home run for the town. That's why we had just said we think it's worthwhile at least pursuing this, see if this, maybe an easement could be allowed, so it doesn't hinder your access back and forth, and maybe the whole thing could work. Who knows? And you could have more land.
Well, my feeling is, once the shovel goes in the ground, the project is done. So, I just don't wanna see the town spending, I believe they, they said 35,000 to 50,000 dollars just to test for us.
Well, that's a town decision. That's why we hire selectmen and all those big shots to make all those decisions. So, hopefully, they spend our money the right way, but as far as you folks are concerned, if that doesn't disturb your way of life, and you can have a permanent easement, okay? So, why don't we look into it and see?
Part of the wetland is where we're trying to raise fish. If we can't do that anymore...
Who's to say you can't, though? That's what I'm saying. At least have a conversation, get into it, and see what can or cannot happen.
I want Tommy to do his development and make his money as quickly as he can. Along in this...
But if he's willing to do something that benefits the town, so the town could win, and he could still do, and he's willing to do that...
Why not?
It's getting a little bit...
It's a good lead to follow.
It's, it's getting a little bit later here, and this is really a preliminary discussion. There's so many things that gotta be investigated with everything, and, you know, I do, do respect the game club there that's been there for many years and everything, too, so I, if we can just work together a little bit, and maybe we could just organize a meeting, and just so that some things can be discussed, and maybe it works, maybe it doesn't work, but not to, to look at it, I think, is something that we'd all be guilty of not trying to protect the town in many years to come with stuff, so...
Yep.
We talked about the losing.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yep.
All right. So, when do we wanna, when do we wanna schedule them to come back?
We need to schedule our next meeting.
Well, are we meeting in two weeks?
We don't have a meeting scheduled.
Yeah.
11:13.
11:13, is that the suggested day?
Looking at voter and Veterans Day, the Tuesdays, two Tuesdays are taken up already in the month, so it looks like Thursday may be the best bet.
Okay, by me.
Which Tuesday?
Thursday the what?
11:13.
13th of November.
Oh, is that a Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That sounds, sounds okay to me.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do it on the, on the 13th of November at 7:30? You wanna do it at 7:30?
Yeah.
I've got the pine tree management building on at 7:30.
Oh, okay, you've got that on for 7:30, so...
We're gonna do 7:45.
Oh, that's, 7:45, right. It'll be a little later than that. It is a sign hearing, so, it'll be eight o'clock. No, 7:45, that's good.
You want a motion to continue?
Well, this isn't a hearing, is it?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, is this a hearing?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So, do we have a motion to continue this to November 13th at 7:45?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, it's a preliminary. Colonial Fence.
You know why. Yeah, we've got, just...
That's just a decision review, so we can actually do that under new business, if you'd like.
Great.
Well, I did have a question on that, though, because I saw a letter from a lawyer today.
That's this letter here, right, send it back to me.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Yeah, there we are.
I did explain to Mr. Mitchell that the hearing was closed and that we could not take any new information into the public record.
It is closed, but you did see this. Is there any validity to this, as far as you can see?
I think it's a separate issue. I think the planning board can maintain or can remove the requirement for a frontage road, what rights... What rights exist in terms of land rights as a result of recording an easement? I think that's an independent issue. I don't think it precludes the planning board from taking this action.
So the rights of the abutters exist no matter what we do? Because those rights existed when they...
To the degree that they exist, they exist. And the planning board can't change property rights, but you can remove the requirement to have a frontage road.
All right. That clarifies it a little bit better.
Which the town did, of course, in the town meeting, right?
Yep, yes.
All right, so this is the final document, huh?
Gina, you prepared this, right?
Yes.
Page four. Where you say this standard condition's probably not needed in this case.
Right.
Give us...
Well...
Educate us on that.
Normally, you ask that the conditions be reproduced on a plan sheet.
Yep.
And I just thought that since this is a simple removal of, of the frontage road easement on the plan, that it's a simple enough act that you may not need these, what do we have, two conditions here?
Yep.
It may not be necessary, although I suppose they could be added to the one sheet. It wouldn't have to be on a, on a separate sheet since they are so short.
Let's see, the page lettering's a little funky. The signature page is page five of four.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to see if you're paying attention, John. Ray must have put this one together.
Actually, I think, I think the real reason is, years ago, and I think this is, because I must have used an, an old, an old template. And I had a problem with the page numbering in the, in the headers. Where, you know, they have the standard X of Y, but it never, it wouldn't work. So I eliminated the Y and I just put in the, whatever number it was, and I changed it each time. But obviously, I, I, it hasn't had, had that problem in many years, so I forgot to go back and change it.
The other culprit.
Yes.
Okay, you can take the blame away.
Yeah.
Bill Gates' fault.
Under the criteria, are those, are those dates right in G six, G six, C six? You know, it was filed in two thousand and three. And the site plan approval was filed in December twenty-second, two thousand and five. Is that, are those dates right? If that's for this site, right?
Yes.
For the car wash?
I think what it was is I did not have the...
This is for Village. Yeah, the fence.
Fence company.
The, the original site plan in two thousand and three, I did not have the exact date that it was approved. But I did have the, the limited site plan that was an amendment in two thousand and five. So I put in the exact... I think I actually intended to put in a blank there, I mean, before the two thousand and three, to fill in the, the exact date.
Okay.
That's probably what we should do.
Yeah. Conditions. Under, under that condition of approval, the one that Walter had already asked about this, where you say the standard condition is probably not needed in this case. I don't see anything that has to be printed. What, what are, under these conditions, would have to be printed on the...
That's kinda why I put that in.
Yeah, if there's nothing to be printed, then...
The only thing would be that, that all the conditions in the original site, special permit decision and special permit and site plan approval, you'd, you'd put that one in and you'd say that it has to be recorded in the regi, but it's almost... You don't even really need to say it has to be recorded because it would, would have been recorded.
Yeah.
It would have a stamp on it and everything, so. Really, the only condition that would be on there is the, the original...
That line up at the top.
First one, okay.
Yeah. I, I don't see any reason why that can't be putting on, put on the plan.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Anyone see anything else on there?
They've already prepared the bylaws.
Well, they should, they, I don't think we should do it.
No, no, the, the entry.
Yeah, oh, sure, sure.
That meets the Registry of Deeds lettering. They can figure out how to do that.
Everyone done with this? Is there any else that... So are we signing this? Do we have, do we have a motion?
Yeah, okay, well...
Just gonna print out a new signature page.
So I will move to approve and sign the special permit application, decision number two thousand and fourteen dash oh four for the Brown Realty Corporation. One thirty-six Norfolk Street, one thirty-six North Street, Norfolk, Mass.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. What signature page are we using?
I have to print out a new one.
Oh.
Okay. Do we sign the bylaws tonight, too? Subject to condition that we add this...
Well, he asked the, well...
You should wait till the appeal period's over.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
If you wanna do it before the next meeting, you could vote to sign it. And then if Betsy's informed that there's been no appeal, you can come in individually and sign it.
He said there was no rush. Oh, rush, okay.
Okay. Well, we're coming in in two weeks anyway, so.
Yep.
Okay, so we voted to sign it.
Right.
MacArthur Ave. Request for continuance. Someone wanna make that motion?
I move to continue the MacArthur Ave one lot subdivision to November thirteenth at eight o'clock.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Did we talk last time about them running out of time on this and needing to extend?
We got an extent, we, they granted us an extension.
Public hearing, oh, okay. Uniformed Street Numbering System Amendment.
Eight fifteen is for us, Pulte.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, there's another, there's another eight fifteen.
Oh, yeah, I see, right. Okay.
Yep. So is there someone here representing Pulte Homes? Okay. So you wanna release more lots? Okay. We had, we had a conversation the last time you were in for lot releases and we had a conversation about the sign. That's an illegal sign, that it was gonna be removed prior to the release of any more lots. So you're in for the release of lots, so the signs are gonna have to go.
Okay. Can we have a discussion about the signs, though?
Yep, you can.
I've been talking a lot with Ray about the signs and whether they need to go or not. And, and I'm here to just have the discussion and try to get some direction from the Board and then we can, we can take action appropriately. But I'm just trying to understand fully what the issue is with, with the signs.
Well, we don't allow subdivision signs. They're not allowed. We don't have them anywhere in town.
On a town roadway.
So, for the record, my name is Mark Mastriani. I'm here presenting Pulte Homes. I've been before, before you guys before. So right now, the signs where they've been installed, they're on, you know, private property. So they're on, you know, the, the road has not been accepted by the town as of yet, the subdivision road, Warren Drive. And, and the signs are not located in the, in the Maple Street right of way. So, that's, so that's why, so that's where I'm a little bit confused. So they're, they're not, they're not on town land at the moment. Now, you know, come the end of the project, when the streets are proposed to be accepted by the town, you know, we would be, we understand that the signs would have to come down. But at the moment, we're, you know, we think they look nice, they identify the property and they help, you know, our prospective buyers, you know, find, you know, our subdivision and find the subdivision and, you know, and, and lead them into the property. So, you know, taking them down, we can do, and we can take them down. That's no, no problem. We can take one down, we can take two down. But I just wanted to have the conversation first. That's, that's...
Well, permit for them?
We do not have a permit for them, no we don't. So that, that's, that's part of the discussion. I mean, I have a picture of them. I, I think you've probably all seen them, you know what they look like. Could I ask the Board for a special permit for them? Is that something that you would consider? Or is that, would that be a waste of my, my time? That, that's something I wanted to, to ask.
Whose land are they on, Mark, if they're not on the town land?
Well, right now, they're on property owned by, by Pulte Homes.
A right of way to be.
It's, it's a right of way to be.
It's a right of way.
It's in the right of way, that's correct.
So that's what Steve was talking about. We don't allow signs on the right of way. So if you had a special permit for a sign, you'd have to comply with these signs and it'd have to be placed outside of the right of way.
So it doesn't sound like the Board would approve the signs where they're located. So I probably wouldn't do that, then. So the, the next question I had for you is, so the, the two signs that are, that are there, okay, so we could take them down. Is there any other avenue I could go for, like a temporary sign or? For instance, I don't have a picture of it, but on, off of Park Street where we come into Rantham of the same subdivision, we have a free standing sign that, that is like four feet, four feet vertical, no, six feet vertical, four feet wide. And it, and it says, you know, Fox, New Homes, you know, Fox Run, you know, price from the, you know, XXXs. But would, would a sign like that be, would, would that be allowed? So not the current signs, but would we be allowed to work with the Board to install a different sign?
I'd be more minimal to a temporary sign, like the one that you're talking about, than the signs that are there. And the reason that we would like to have them remove, remove now is because now is when we have the most influence. When it gets closer to the end of the project, it gets harder and harder and harder for us to get applicants to do things. So though, if, if we get to the end of the projects and we're just waiting for the, 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 the streets to be accepted, that's not a good time for us to be telling you to take those signs down. And the next thing you know, that they're, they're stuck up there. And, you know, the, the issue of the signs is not a new one. I don't believe that, they are definitely not on a plan. So they're not on a plan to begin with. When the walls started going up, I asked, are those walls gonna be having a sign on them? And I was told, no, that's against zoning. So then, the next thing you know, the, the walls were designed to look exactly like something a sign would go in. And the next thing you know, there was a sign in there. So, you know, that's why this is the time for us to have the signs removed.
Right, so, so you're absolutely correct. So the, the walls that are on the Maple Street side are the same exact walls that are on the Park Street and Rantham side. And those have the same exact signs. And of course, on the approved plans, it showed the signs. And during the, the planning board approval process, your Board removed the signs from the Norfolk walls because there was no signs allowed. So that, that was, you're, you're, you're correct about that. Now, I hope it wasn't me who told you there'd be no sign there because...
Oh, no, this goes back quite a ways.
Yeah, so, so I, I didn't think I had said that. I know I've been before you a few times and we've had, we've talked about the, the signs and that's fair enough.
So is there a prohibition from us to allow a temporary sign within a right of way?
With a special permit?
We, we can have a special permit for a temporary sign?
I don't think it can, I'm, I'm reading the, the, the rules here. It says, no sign shall be in a, in a street right of way or on property of the town of Norfolk. But in, in the table, it does allow for residential subdivision sign up to eight square feet by special permit.
Oh, okay, so...
Up to eight square feet?
Yes.
For two years.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
Sign laws need some revamping.
That's right.
Eight square feet, well, what you were talking about was four by six, it's twenty-four square feet, so.
Yeah.
Significantly larger than what this bylaw allows.
So, so the signs that are installed up there today, which we, which we've talked about, so I understand it. But, so this sign right here is eighteen inches by, by five feet long. So actually, that, the signs that are there today, each one is, is, if you take the entire rectangle, which it's questionable whether you actually go from the writing or not, but if we just say the entire rectangle, it would be seven and a half square feet, so.
But you can't have stone walls on the right of way, either.
Excuse me?
You can't have stone walls or any permanent structure on a right of way.
Yeah, that, that I don't have, I don't have an answer for you on because the, we built the stone walls in accordance with the approved plans and I, I don't, I don't know what, you know, what to do about that.
He's the one that ruled me.
Who did?
You.
On stone, I only go by advice of, of counsel.
I know you do.
Yeah. But anyway, I don't remember the whole thing about stone walls. I, I don't remember anything.
No permanent structure can be on the right of way because the town, then, when it's taken over, is responsible.
Has to maintain it, yeah. Well, the stone walls are there.
Yeah. Now, there is section F nine A eighteen, which says, it's kind of a catch-all section. It says, in particular instances, special permits for larger or additional signs may be permitted if it's determined that the architecture of the building, the location of the building with reference to the street or the nature of the establishment is such that the sign shall be permitted in the public interest.
I thought that was lying in the background.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can have a larger sign. If you come in, if you wanna have a special permit for a temporary sign, you can, you can just come in and have a sign hearing and, and we can probably do that. But you, you have to come in with your recommended size also.
I understand. We, we can do that.
Does anyone else have any objection to a temporary sign over there to replace these existing ones?
Nope.
Michelle?
Nope.
Nope. Oh, okay. All right. So now you know where we stand.
Yeah, so if we could proceed with, so with the request for the lot releases, you know, I'd certainly be willing to, so...
Before that, I got a question for you, Mark.
Yes.
May I, Steve?
Sure, go ahead.
Are you the site supervisor?
I am not, but I'm, but I'm, I just received that memo today.
Well, you folks have been altering the wetland on Maple Street for the past number of months. You, which actually brings you under... You, which actually brings you under conservation jurisdiction, and you face either a cease-and-desist or a filing of a notice of intent. There is a large area of dense silt covering the pond that's been settling there, and it seems like the water coming out of your outlet pipe, Mark, which we're not sure was a violation of the state DEP stormwater regulations, but that being said, the water comes gushing out of there at an abnormally large volume. When I looked at your subdivision plans, halfway, well, actually, 700 feet up Warren Street from Maple Street, there was a cul-de-sac that was abandoned. And that cul-de-sac was abandoned and replaced with four lots with long driveways. At the back of that cul-de-sac was a detention basin that was 300 feet by 150 feet, and obviously, that was holding about 800 feet of runoff. My question to you is, I think one of the reasons possibly why this is altering the wetland is that one and a third acre catch basin, which had a facility to infiltrate some of the stormwater and clean it, was abandoned, and I don't see any replacement of that drainage area on the new plan that was approved. I also didn't see, and haven't been able to find a copy of the redone drainage calculations after that large basin was abandoned. So, what I would like from you, before I would acquiesce to any releasing of any lots, is a copy of the drainage plan that was done with the abandonment of that cul-de-sac, showing that the stormwater actually still works. And if it does, then we would have to address the volume of discharge going into the wetland area and the silting that's in there, and some type of a method for it to be cleaned up before you move forward. Tom has given you a list of soil erosion controls and devices that should be in place. What you have now, piles of chopped up, looks like tree stumps, with one little foot pilings on the side of the roadway, is woefully inadequate. That's actually lawful. That's going to stop nothing. I saw the kids, they're just kicking them aside as they're going down the roadway. The catch basins seem to be loaded with silt. The runoff is extensive, and basically, you've created a major issue in the wetland area off of Maple Street that has to be addressed immediately. So, from our agent, and me as unfortunate chairman of the Conservation Commission, we had asked you to try to alleviate this drainage issue with the planning board. And at the same time, we would like you to get in contact with our agent and come up with a facility to clean out that wetland area and stop the discharge and the volume. So, if this drainage system that was redone shows that it actually works, then our question is, why is the volume so great going down there? But basically, you've got 800 feet of roadway that was caught in this 300-foot-long basin that was abandoned, and this extra 800 feet of roadway is now dumping all into the same discharge pipe. And if your sediment control device that's at the end there is not up to DEP standards, then you're in direct violation of their stormwater standards, which is another issue. I had asked our engineer whether what you have in place there complies with the state rules, and he wasn't sure. So, as part of the review of the drainage, we will look at your cleaning devices in this new drainage and see if that all complies. But in the meantime, simultaneously, you should be talking to our agent and having a site visit and having that wetland area cleaned up immediately. So, as far as I go, as far as a planning board member, I would not vote to release any more lots, and I would ask that the rest of the members hold off until this major issue is addressed.
It did appear to be a major issue. I knew nothing about it until I saw the pictures today. And a lot of it's probably because we haven't had any rain, so...
This was before the four inches we got currently.
So, could you, could you show us on the map where it's originating? Because, you know, that drainage basin in the back of the cul-de-sac, that was only for the cul-de-sac, before the cul-de-sac was taken out.
It wasn't here. See the arrows? This is all going down in there. This basin of 300 by 150 feet would never be the size like that to take care of four lots. And these lots now, that all have long driveways, have the runoff running towards the lot. So, this here was built, obviously, to accommodate a lot more than a full lot cul-de-sac.
It was a 600, 700-foot segment of Warren Drive that went in there.
See the arrows going this way here, Steve?
Yep.
From here down, they're all going and curved into this basin here. So, when they changed and eliminated this, this basin just...
Is that downhill? I thought that was uphill, to the back of the cul-de-sac.
These long driveways are going downhill to the lot. So, that is what's contributing to the excess. All this 800-foot area would then end up being 1,300 feet, but it's not. This is all self-contained here, but the water that was catching that basin just seemed to disappear, and I think that's the reason why we have the excess discharge. And the silt in the wetland is not just normal silt. It's so dense in color, it's probably a couple of inches thick.
But where's the, where's the silt coming from? That's what...
The outlet pipe for all of the stormwater here is right over here, and it's directly discharging into the wetland area, into the 50-foot, no build zone, actually.
And that's coming off of these empty lots.
It's coming off of 1,500 feet.
That's the concern, that the erosion controls are not adequate along Warren Drive.
But I would like to see the drainage study that was done when they abandoned that basin to show that the volume off of Warren Drive was working, and what other things they did to mitigate the loss of that basin, which, as I said, is 300 feet by 150 feet.
I do remember that there was a conversation about the drainage. There was definitely a conversation about the drainage.
I asked Tom and I asked Ray for a copy of the study, and nobody has found it at this point, so hopefully, you folks have it.
Yeah, I will look to see what we have. I mean, so I hear your concerns, and, you know, I'll just start off by saying that these are important concerns, and we take erosion control seriously. So, but with that said, you know, I was made aware of the pictures that the Conservation Commission agent made about a week and a half ago. And right after those pictures surfaced, you know, our construction super went out to the site and started working on, looking at the issue and looking for resolution. And we also had a site meeting with Ray and Mr. McGee a few days afterwards, and we actually looked at the outlet and the surrounding wetland areas, which was after the, you know, the largest of the storms, which was the day of the Patriots game on the Thursday night. So, and I won't speak for everybody else, but we had looked at the area, and we did not see, or I did not see extensive silt or erosion or...
Well, don't say that to my agent, because you'll definitely be seized.
So, with all due respect...
It photographed really well.
It did, at the peak of a very heavy storm.
No, no, the pictures we took were not with this current four inches of rain, it was before with a smaller storm. So, secondly, what I want to see, what, you know, you're looking at something to answer a scientific problem. I would like to see the drainage study when that basin was eliminated to show where that volume of water was now directed to, and the cleansing that went on at that basin, where is that water being cleansed? And I don't think it's a matter of simple erosion controls, personally speaking. And to be honest with you, Mark, with no disrespect, the way you piled the mulch up on the side of the roadway going down, I don't think you take erosion control seriously, because that is totally inadequate, totally. My own personal opinion.
I'll relay that to our...
But anyways, the wetland has to be cleaned, this study has to be found to show that this all was readjusted for the loss of that basin, and then moving forward, this has to be followed to make sure the volume is no larger than which is allowed, and that'll take a study, and also that there is no more silt going into that wetland area.
Sure. So, I received a letter today around lunchtime, and, you know...
The letter from whom?
From the Conservation Commission agent, talking about the drainage. And so, it was, you know, six hours ago, and I forwarded it on to our engineers, and I apologize, I don't have a response for you tonight, but I didn't have very much.
Before the response, I would like to see the actual study.
Fair enough.
There you go. Start with that. I think that's a good starting point, and I think if you set the erosion controls so they work and are in place, I think that would be a second good step. Let me take it from there.
Fair enough, yeah. So, as I was driving over here, I also received a memo from your consultant with his list of concerns about the erosion control, and, you know, I got that an hour ago, and we'll send that to our engineers, and we'll, I was planning on addressing that as well.
Okay. Who else had a list? Ray, did you have a list, or was it...
We did.
Oh, okay.
I think that the planning board will discuss Tom's list before you look into that. I think you should be looking at the overall problem. As far as the solution, I think we'll, we'll come to the solution after we find out what has been done and what hasn't been done. You may be involved with another drainage study to show where this water has to go that is now going all to the same spot.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the consent.
And as I said, in the meantime, contact our office, the Conservation Office, and talk with our agent, and find out what exactly she expects to clean up the wetland area that's been disturbed. There's also a handmade trench that was dug by hand that goes from the outlet pipe from your subdivision down to an outlet pipe from Maple Street houses, and it looks like that was built because the flow was overflowing your device and overflowing the bales that you had there, and this little trench drove the water down to the outlet pipe down where the Maple Street discharge was coming into. I know that wasn't part of the drainage plan. That looks like a homemade job because somebody saw water overflowing from your riprap area where your outlet pipe, so... That being said, I wouldn't be in favor of releasing any lots at this time.
Anyone have any objection to delaying these, release of these lots?
Not on the basis of what I've heard, no.
Because when I saw this earlier today, I was, I was pretty surprised by it, so... Do you have any objection to holding off on these? No, we're not going to release any lots tonight. We'll bring the subject back up when we, at our November 13th meeting.
And can I expect to see you or somebody from your office at the Conservation Office this week? Very good. Excellent.
And just to rub salt in the wound, it would be good on the 13th to have a couple of pictures of those stone walls without the signs.
I understand.
I'm going to show you mine all 18 feet off the pavement.
To be honest, I submitted a request in September, and, you know, four hours before this meeting, I received this, you know, serious concern. And to stand here and tell me how terrible I am, I mean, we're available every day if there was a major concern. We ran right out there and met Ray. So, to do that here tonight is surprising.
You said you had the, you said you had the pictures a week and a half ago?
Yeah.
And the letter came out?
When we got Bob McGee and Ray out at the site, and we looked at the area, we didn't get that kind of reaction at all.
It's a wetland area, you should have met you with the agent. Bob McGee has nothing to do with wetlands.
But he's our road superintendent. He's been doing inspections out there. He was, this wasn't supposed to happen during inspections.
No, it wasn't, no.
I mean, John, I appreciate your opinions, and I respect it, and you've been here a long time, and, but the agent didn't send us the pictures.
We've been trying, we've been trying to figure out, going through the back plans, why this volume is so large, why this discharge and alteration is so significant. So, we're trying to research plans, and this was before my time on the planning board. So, I see a huge abandoned detention basin. I asked for drainage study. I can find none anywhere. I know what normal volume coming out of our RCP pipe is, and this wasn't normal volume. So, putting everything together, we're trying to get our facts together, which I think we did now, to direct you to get the drainage study, to try to clean up the wetland, to try to get the erosion control barriers all in place, which all should have been done right along the way. I don't think anybody has called you personally bad.
No.
I simply said that I don't agree with the erosion controls, your company's actually, not yours. I think they're inadequate, and they're a cause of part of the problem, but I think a bigger part of the problem is more substantial, involving the drainage that has nowhere to go.
And I, I don't want to belabor it, but I appreciate that, you know, and just, it was before you were on the planning board, and it was before my company was involved in the project.
I understand that too.
We bought a project that was designed by an engineer, and we built it per the plan. So, again, I don't have any answers for you tonight because I learned about it four hours ago.
Which is why I asked if you had, if you were the site supervisor, because the site supervisor would probably see an enormous area of two-inch-thick brown silt in a wetland where you have your drainage system. Normally, after rainfall of that magnitude, site supervisors go out and check to make sure the drainage is all working properly and going where it's directed to go. That's why I asked you initially, and you're off the hook because you're not he.
Well, no, I...
Okay.
I'm not off the hook.
Anyways, let's see if we can get this corrected. Let's see if we can get this corrected.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything further?
Well, no, no, there's only those two subjects. I mean, I don't expect that you didn't anticipate the questions about the signs, but this one here was a surprise to me because I just got it today. Did anyone get, see this before today?
Just today, no, just today.
You didn't know about it before today?
I knew about what was going on, yeah. I was trying to research this and find some answers, so, yeah.
So, you were out there. You actually saw it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
This silt?
I did not see the picture, these pictures here with the silt the way it is today, no. That's a brand-new situation resulting from the last storm. I was out there after the Thursday storm, and there was some fine silt that was in the, in the wetland. In terms of impact, it was very little, very little impact. It was just...
You could still see the rocks underneath?
You could still see the rocks fine. This is, this is what I would call pudding. In fact, that's what we were all remarking about when we were out there after the Thursday storm, was that we were expecting pudding coming out of these, out of these 14-inch pipe, but there wasn't. It was just very fine sandy silt, and it was very little of it that was left trace on the rocks. So, this is a different situation based on this last weekend's storm. So, you know, I don't know what they did, if this is what was flushed out of the pipes or, you know, in replacing the silt sacks. I know that they had done, done that in some places, or this is brand-new silt that came from another location. You know, that's still under investigation at this point, as far as I can tell.
Those are good options, though, as to what they could have been.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm guessing at what happened, but certainly could have been.
Okay, so those photographs were taken after you were there and saw it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have photographs of a different situation.
All right. So, you know where we're coming from, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. You guys have always been fair to us, and we've always worked well together, so that's fine. We'll, we just received a memo or a letter today, and we usually jump on those and resolve those the best we can.
All right, so you do want to come back in two weeks and have the discussion about the lot releases again?
Yeah, yes.
Is it two weeks? Two weeks, right?
Yep.
The 13th.
In the meantime, if you can find that study, if you can bring it off to our office, that'd be great.
If you can't find the study...
I may have it. I haven't looked, so...
Okay.
But if you can't find it, then the question is, was one done?
Then you, then you want an engineer to...
Redo it. Yes.
Yeah, analyze it now, if you didn't analyze it then.
It's going to be redone.
I can't remember the details of, I remember the cul-de-sac being eliminated. I can't remember what was done with drainage studies at the time, but...
So, if you can't find it, then you can analyze it.
Well, I'm hoping we'll find it because I'm assuming that the engineer who removed the cul-de-sac in the pond redid the drainage and submitted it to the board, and it was reviewed and approved as part of the project. I don't think it was done just on a whim. I don't think it was, it wasn't snuck out of there or anything. It was, I'm sure it was designed.
Well, Tom, you would have a copy if you reviewed it correctly.
We should have a copy. We'll try to find it, yes.
So, I guess it's two questions. If the study was done, that's a good thing, and then if Tom reviewed it, that's a better thing. So, at least it's a, it's a better point to start from.
Well, I remember when the cul-de-sac was removed, and I remember conversations about the drainage.
Good.
I do too, but I don't remember Warren Road being part of it. I remember, I...
I could have sworn that, my recollection is that that only, that drainage system only handled the cul-de-sac.
That was my recollection, and if that's our recollection, then we were either misinformed or... That was my recollection, and if, if that's our recollection, then we were either misinformed or, or, you know, missing the, missing a bigger picture.
If a person thought that, that, that handled only the cul-de-sac, and now you have long driveways with the drainage all pitched down to the houses.
Yeah, it would be fine. It would be fine. But I don't, I, that's how I recall it, and so that's why I'm asking if there wasn't a drainage study done planned. Just in case. Two weeks is a really short period of time, and John's hoping that you come back with recommendations as opposed to, as opposed to just, you know, just what you were able to find and what you weren't able to find, but actually how you're going to resolve the problem, so. That's why I was suggesting more work if it needed to be done, to go ahead and do it.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Did we continue the MacArthur Ave already?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Public hearing for Tommy and his zoning articles. Are we having a public hearing?
It is.
For a zoning article right now?
Yes.
Wow. It's your favorite thing, right?
Oh, boy.
Do we have angry people?
Would you like me to read the notice?
Yes, please do.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 40A of Mass. Journal Laws. The Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 28, 2014, at 8:30 at Norfolk Town Hall on Liberty Lane, Norfolk, to discuss proposed changes to Norfolk zoning bylaws which have been submitted to the warrant for the November 18, 2014 Fall Town Meeting. The proposed amendments to Norfolk zoning bylaws are as follows. To move I-7B-1 special permit uses by the Planning Board and its contents to I-7A-1 special permit by Planning Board and delete Section I-7B-1 special permit uses by the Planning Board or take any other action relative thereto. Two, to rename I-7A-1 special permit by Planning Board to I-7A-1 special permit uses by the Planning Board or take other action relative thereto. Three, to amend the zoning bylaws by adding to Section D-2C residential uses relating to solar, solo, solar, excuse me, photovoltaic systems or take any other action relative thereto. Four, to amend the zoning bylaws by deleting the following sections, D-2B-4, J-7A-3, I-7C, K-7C, and L-7C related to power generating plants or take any other action relative thereto. Five, to amend the zoning bylaws by correcting the adoption date from June 1968 to March 16, 1953, or take any other action thereto. Six, to amend D-2 Schedule of Use Regulations relating to kennels of the Norfolk zoning bylaws or take any other action relative thereto. Seven, to amend Section B definitions related to kennels of the Norfolk zoning bylaws or take any other action relative thereto. Eight, to amend Section F-14 of the Norfolk zoning bylaws relating to medical marijuana treatment centers or take any other action relative thereto. In addition to the aforementioned, the Planning Board will discuss a proposed amendment that will establish a uniform street numbering system of the rules and regulations for subdivision of land. Complete copies of the text of the amendments are available for review in the Planning Board office during the hours 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. For the Planning Board, John Wheldon.
So who's, who's going to go through these with us? Ray, you going to do these?
Yeah, I'm going to bring you down through the document to Article 12.
Article 12, okay.
Which is basically number one. And this deals with the special permit uses. And essentially what we're doing is we're, we're deleting Section B, which is the special permit uses, and moving the contents of Section B up into Section A, but at the same time renaming Section A, which talks about residential uses. This isn't all in there, but it's, is there other particular uses that would be allowed by special use? And there's two of them. Gee, one more of this, just a second.
Here's the zoning, if you.
Yeah. Sure. Thanks. Okay, and I-7B-1 would be special permit uses by the Planning Board, drive-up windows and wireless communicate, communication facilities. In I-7A-1, we talk about special permits, and this would be residential dwellings in the B-1 outside the business car. So you're just moving those up as special permit uses.
So what you're doing is condensing, really?
Yes.
In essence?
That is true.
Cleaning up the language?
That's correct.
Not changing the intent?
None, no, not at all.
Oh, that's because the residential dwellings in the B-1 district went away in the first place?
Yes.
Therefore, the I-7A-1 went away?
That's right.
Okay, so you're, you're moving it to an existing number?
Correct, yeah.
That has no use anymore? Okay. Got it?
Article, so that would be Article 12 and 13 in here, which would be one and two in the list that we have in our advertisement. Article three is, is, deals with solar photovoltaic systems and separates, or distinguishes between ground-mounted and roof-mounted. Roof-mounted would be allowed in all districts as it is currently, and ground-mounted would be a special permit in all districts. So there's some kind of review by the town.
And we know why that happened.
Yeah, well, we know why it happened, but I, I thought that, that there were limitations on, on what we can do even with a special permit. Is that correct?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what those limitations are, but I, I think there are some limitations as to what you can, what you can do for ground-mounted facilities.
All right, I have no objection to this. This is the first thing I thought of, was making it a special permit in the first place, but as soon as I had said that, people said, "Oh, you can't do that."
And in there, we, we also have wind energy systems, which would be, you know, windmills, towers, that kind of thing, as a special permit.
And where is it that the special permit, the review authority for the special permit in this case?
That would be at the Planning Board.
And, and is it in section? It's, it's, this is just? This is just a continuation of the, of the chart? So it's, so it's part of the bigger section?
Yeah, nothing's changed in, in the rest of the order, the bylaw.
Good question.
Well, I'm looking. D. D-2C. Does it say in here at all the, is there anything else that has special permits in, in this?
In the chart?
No, I guess there are here for kennels, but we've never, never had a hearing for kennels. So who's the special permit granting authority for that one? I'm just wondering where it says who the granting authority is in here. Do you know where it is?
For kennels?
Well, yeah, but if, if, if it gets put in here with these new proposed regulations, and it says special permit, does it say who the special permit granting authority is?
If it doesn't say, then it's ZBA.
Right, right. So this would go to the ZBA?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought you had said that it would be the Planning Board.
I thought it was the Planning Board, but no.
Oh, okay.
They know that?
Yeah, have they been told?
Yeah.
All right.
So would, there wouldn't be a change in terms of things that go to the ZBA. This would be just another one of the things that ends up going to the ZBA. But it gives it some level of review as opposed to no level of review currently. Any other questions? Article 15. This just removes the power generating facilities because of the work that we're using, or the words that we're using here.
So they'd no longer be allowed?
Right, well, they're allowed as, you know, a windmill or the type of generating facility rather than as just a general category. Fifteen thousand, a hundred kilowatts is.
Sounds big.
It's big.
It is big, yeah.
Yeah, and so these other things sound smaller.
They are. This is more in keeping with what's happening.
So by eliminating this, it doesn't then open the door if somebody wanted to build a power plant?
Don't laugh, they're, they're nearby.
Yeah, and instead of.
It doesn't open the door, no, but what it does is it allows, it's a prohibited use at that point, and we'll have to get special consideration by the town.
It's prohibited here by saying no.
Right, and by taking it out, we don't say it's prohibited or not prohibited, right? We don't even reference it.
We don't reference it. This is more, this is more clear.
Right, I think there's a, there is a, a general provision that says if it's not listed, it's prohibited.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, so, I mean, sometimes that can get funny too, because into gray areas, but, so it should be still prohibited if it's not an allowed use or a permitted use anywhere.
Right, I don't know why we wouldn't keep it in with the nose.
The nose is being struck out along.
But the whole thing is being struck out.
Yes.
So I don't know why we wouldn't keep in, yeah, the D-2B-4 and with the nose.
Because it would be confusing based on this new language.
Well, no, this says more than fifteen hundred kilowatts, and it's larger than, than.
How big is it? How much do we get out of a solar field?
My point is, if you're not building a solar field and you're building some other kind of generating power.
Typical home system is five kilowatts.
Five.
Fifteen hundred.
Well, fifteen hundred's a big system.
Very big.
So why does it, why does it hurt having it in there that you can't build a power plant?
I don't know what the answer is to that, but honestly.
I think you answered it before when you said there are two different types of, these are, the systems, the systems for residential uses are smaller than this is a more industrial size.
Typically, what you do is you, you say in your, your ordinance is what you'd like to see rather than what you don't like to see, and then, and as Gino had explained, the, the, the bylaws will say, there'll be language in there that says any use not expressly, expressly stated in here is considered prohibited.
As long as we say that.
Well, we do say that, that's, it's definitely in here.
So I, I don't understand why you would say no in use table. It does, unless there's something that's just so far out there that you don't want to see happen in your community.
Well, that's one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think this was added years ago when there was a proposal for, for a power plant in Norfolk.
Was it?
Back in like the eighties, I think.
Weren't they going to put like sludge or something over by the prison? And they were going to burn something, and they were going to create power from it or something like that?
I remember the sludge fight, yeah.
Yeah. I haven't heard from you on this one, John.
I think it's fine just leaving it out.
Just getting rid of it?
Well, we're prepping our zoning bylaws that say if it's not expressly listed, then it's prohibited. That pretty much covers it.
So, but there is no limitation on scale?
No.
On these ground-mounted solar or the wind systems? In other words, in a residential district, you could have a field that was two thousand by two thousand square feet. There's no, there's no, and on the other hand, if a person wanted to have a ground-mounted solar facility just for their own house, where they were just going to generate five kilowatts or whatever, that, that's also being made a special permit. So kind of on, on both ends, there may be things to think about there. If I want to put it on my roof, I can do it by right. If I want to take the same panel and put it on the ground, then it becomes a special permit process.
And there's not, because there's no de minimis?
Yeah, no. I mean, you, you could add something for systems over five kilowatts, or ten kilowatts, or something. Well, at this point, it would have to be an amendment, right?
Yes.
But it might be better coming from the board than coming from, as a friendly amendment than coming from the floor?
Now, where would you put that in zoning?
Under the description of ground-mounted solar. Just like, just like in the old D-2B-4 had the size as part of the description?
Ground-mounted solar photovoltaic systems greater than five kilowatts or whatever is appropriate.
That means less than five kilowatts is not allowed?
Yeah.
Correct, actually.
Can we do that by law? Where solar is, as right, can you limit the size to a residential ground-mounted system by law?
Well, can you limit it, can you require a special permit for?
Not sure.
You know, I, I'd have to re-read that section of.
Has Town Council reviewed the warrant?
Yes.
So they, they must have checked that out.
I, I like the idea of, I like the idea of residential units being allowed by right and anything larger, knowing that, knowing that we have an industrial-sized ground-mounted solar system so that the people would recognize that that's a possibility. I'd like, I'd like to see that distinction between allowed by right and, and larger allowed by special permit.
Which would really amend this table here, is what it would do, yeah.
I think, I think I would probably end up, I think that that, that ends up being another, another line.
Yeah.
And, and so that this becomes the, this D becomes the, the larger one and then the smaller one. The individual, the individual unit size, whether it's a commercial, a commercial business, a single commercial business or a single home, it's a smaller size.
You could add the smaller size to D-2C-9, where it says roof-mounted solar, I can't say it, roof-mounted solar photovoltaic systems and ground-mounted systems generating less than five kilowatts. Or less than ten, or whatever the number is, yeah.
Well, that again takes it out of the special permit process. And the special permit process is what we wanted as a result of the problem that we had with the last.
I'm raising the issue.
Did you, did you have a problem with an individual unit?
Well, it was, it was probably, what, what was creating the issue was probably not more than about a, it was probably not more than a small one anyway, right? Five kilogram, kilowatts or something like that? You know the one I'm talking about, right?
I didn't see it, I do, I did hear about it.
I'm doubting that that generated much more than five kilowatts. There weren't that many panels. I mean, it was significant enough in a small neighborhood, but, but I doubt it generated very. I mean, it was significant enough in a small neighborhood, but, but I doubt it generated very much power.
But the whole reason was that to prevent someone locating it right outside somebody else's windows in the future is to make it by special permit.
Well, it's against the structure. It has to meet the yard setback.
You also couldn't require them to have a solid blocking fence.
Right.
Which was another issue with that unit.
Or it was a chain link.
That was, that was the fight with the neighborhood. You want a solid fence and the...
And then the solid fence might cast a shadow on it.
Whatever, yeah.
Well, leaving it the way it is gets you in the special permit category that you wanted for...
It gets us the first step. It's, it just, it looks like it has to be tweaked a little bit for those, for those larger facilities. Because it almost seems as though it, that we're saying, oh, okay, you could do a really big one, just have to do it by special permit. And there's nothing that can tell us that we can restrict the size in a residential district, right?
Special permit, we can just by the special permit criteria.
Character.
Absolutely.
Well, it depends on whether or not it impacts the character.
Our judgment.
But if it doesn't, then they grant the permit.
Right, exactly.
So that's when the big, big natural gas facility comes in that we're gonna be concerned.
Yeah, is there a, a large gas pipeline through Norfolk?
Didn't they just put one in?
Did they? I don't know. There is a pipeline.
I don't know if it's large. I don't think it's large.
I don't think it's large, no. Small diameter.
Where did they put it?
Downtown.
In street.
Along the power lines?
Put those gas facility along the power lines.
Okay.
No, to serve adjacent land uses, yeah. No, I'm talking about like the, the big ones that transmit from...
I don't believe so.
The equivalent of a high tension power line.
I think there's been talk about putting one near the power lines from Columbia.
Okay, well, that's where, that's where the power plants want to go, where the, where the pipelines and the, and the high tension lines intersect.
Yes.
Sure. Well, I think we've just prohibited that because we struck out.
Right.
Power generating plants greater than fifteen hundred.
No, this is transmission. This isn't generating power. That what he's speaking of?
Oh, no, we're talking about generating, what the gas is for.
Yeah, the transmission gas line, but that's where the generating plant wants to go.
Oh, okay, okay.
So they can use the gas and put it in the, in the, in the grid.
Okay, so we leave it as is then, right?
I guess, yeah.
As proposed.
We, we should relook at that though, because you have to make sure that, well, we don't restrict anything in there the way we've got it written. Of power generating, right? Oh, I guess pow...
Well, it has to be power generated from solar photovoltaic or from wind.
Right, yeah, that, yeah, that's right.
It's the only thing you're allowing.
It's the only kind of power that we allow.
We're also classifying these as residential uses.
I know, I found, I had trouble...
Photovoltaic, ground mounted, commercial system is a residential use.
Yeah?
No?
Yes, well, it's for powering the, the home, right? It's...
Somebody doesn't limit it to that.
But that's why you have a review, so that you can limit it. That's the whole point of having a special permit.
These cannot be industrial.
Yeah, but Tom's right because it's...
It's in the B districts and the C districts.
It's in all the, it's in the business and commercial districts too.
If I, if I have twenty acres of land in a residential district, I can fill it with a ground mounted photovoltaic system. Why can't I?
And if cited properly, that wouldn't be a problem to the neighbors. If cited improperly, it would be a big problem to the neighbors as we've already witnessed.
Yeah, it'd still be up subject to the special permit in that scenario.
It's a very powerful control, but I'm just saying it's odd to describe them as residential uses.
Is there a reason why?
So that someone who wanted to put some solar panels in their backyard to power their own house would have that ability.
What Tom is talking about is, is a field that's so large that you'd be selling power back to the grid, right?
Yes, yeah.
And, and I've seen that happen in other communities, and that is...
We're just inserting it in the residential zone.
That does happen in residential zones.
It should be miscellaneous. I think so.
If you have enough acreage, if you have an appropriate site, what is the harm?
Why don't we call, why don't we call them renewable energy uses? What's the, why, if, if these are the three things?
I don't know what that term means as we sit here right now.
Well, you, that burning wood is a renewable.
Right, but then the only ones that are listed, but the only, the only choices that are listed are wind and solar.
Well, either that or there's already a category called miscellaneous uses. It could, you could just slide into there.
Why not just call it energy uses?
Energy uses.
Because we're saying the only energy that we'll allow is photovoltaic or wind. Across these different types of districts.
We, didn't we approve at town meeting about five years ago a solar field for Tomita Placido underneath the power lines behind Ripazedge?
Sounds familiar.
Wasn't that approved? And that's residential zone?
Sighted appropriately, appropriately makes some sense.
Yeah, but the zone gets answered in the district part of this chart. I think everyone's just questioning if it should be labeled D two point C residential use, or if it should be just called an energy use. We're not defining a residential use below that. We're defining an energy type.
Because, well, it's included in with a whole bunch of other things that are residential use items. There's a whole list of things here that are residential uses. Agricultural greenhouse or nursery and all these other things that are...
But all those other uses don't have listings in the commercial and business, but this one does, so that, that makes it kind of not fit in there.
Oh, so you're saying a separate section should exist for this?
Right, that's, that's what we...
Or as Gino said, put it under miscellaneous uses, or as Michelle suggested, put it under a new category called energy use.
Energy, okay.
If you, if you put it under residential, you're giving the false impression that these are small facilities to power an individual house, and there's absolutely no restriction on it.
I think the miscellaneous use under the title energy wins.
Miscellaneous is fine.
Which causes the least, which causes the least editing?
Yeah, which is the easiest, least path of, path of resistance.
Yeah.
Miscellaneous already exists. That's, that's the only reason, that's the reason I suggested that one.
I'm gonna suggest one more just to see how it flies, is transportation and utility uses.
Oh.
Perfect.
Well, that's, that's better. I like that one. Utility.
What section is that?
That would be D two B.
Oh.
No.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's where it fits.
We had other utilities in town, who knew?
And it really fits...
That's where the power generating plant is coming from.
So it's really perfect because this replaces that.
I like when the plan works out just the way we expect it.
You're deleting that one. In fact, even this should say renumber the following. We should make these numbers D two B five, no, because you're deleting four.
Why don't you just replace it with four?
But you have more than one.
Oh, I see.
Well, you have the contingency that one or the other passes. The town meeting can take independent action here, so you gotta figure out the numbering system. I get, in fact, the deleted one should say and renumber the following subsections.
Why don't you make it, yeah, it's, you can't, you can't condense the articles, right? You can't add them together.
And you gotta, you gotta figure the town meeting can take any action on either one, so...
Are we ready to move on to the next one?
Yes.
So is it five, six, and seven?
It could be, it could be six, seven, and eight, but, or five, six, and seven, depending upon the way it falls at town meeting.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be five, six, seven, and eight, and leave five alone for the time being, and maybe just renumber if, if that passes.
Yeah, the numbering, the moderator can adjust that, I think, because he or she will know what happened to, well, actually, the articles are in the wrong order.
If you remove it, you could just say intentionally not used.
Yeah.
Yeah, left blank.
Left blank intentionally, yeah.
Okay, what's this with the adoption date?
Well, that's an interesting one. The zoning bylaw was actually adopted in nineteen fifty-three. All these years, we've been operating with a bylaw that says nineteen sixty-three, I think it was.
Sixty-eight, yeah.
Thank you, sixty-eight. And that was incorrect. Our building zoning official had an instance in the past year where somebody had come to him with an appeal, I believe, and they had the wrong date. And he, it was, it was, it was a grandfathered use that they assumed was allowed based on the sixty-eight date, and it happened between the fifty-three and the sixty-eight date. So therefore, he wanted to make sure that that was cleared up in this next bylaw review. So it's, it's another housekeeping issue.
Yeah.
Shouldn't, it shouldn't result in too much other than less confusion.
And there's documentation to demonstrate that it was fifty-three.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, fifty-three was when it was voted on by the state, right? It was adopted?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
No, that's when the town adopted it.
Oh.
Because the state was before that.
Oh, was it really? All right.
Yep.
How about this one with the kennels? I never heard anything about kennels before.
You're lucky.
We had a few issues in town with kennels, and some folks on the committee decided to put their hat in the ring and, and help write a kennel bylaw so that the town actually has something that relates to state law and has some, some limits or some, some, basically some way to contain kennels and not just let them happen in town willy-nilly, so...
Chris, Chris?
Chris Weider, who was on the zoning board, and also the dog officer, animal control officer in Rantham, he wrote this. So what essentially we're doing is we're, we're taking out the section that says kennel for or more dogs, and coming up with a definition of a personal kennel, but allowing those in all districts. And then a commercial kennel will have a little bit more definition and use parameters. So you need five acres of land, you must, the kennel enclosures must be a hundred feet from the property line and five hundred feet to neighboring dwellings, and this would also be subject to a planning board review, under-site plan review. So you're allowed as a special permit in...
This is for four, four or more dogs, is that right?
Is that, that's the way it looks like to me, right?
Yeah.
More than four.
More than four, yeah. So that would be five or more dogs. So on your...
Is that, is, that, I see that definition under personal, but what about the commercial breeder?
Yeah, I agree.
The commercial breeder would be considered a commercial kennel, and so those would be allowed under a special permit in the residential zone. It's not allowed in the B one zone. A special permit in the B two through B four and the C one zone, and then the C two, C three, C five, C four, and C six, it's, it's not allowed.
Did I, I don't see, I don't see a size on commercial.
I don't see a size on commercial either.
And I don't see those parameters you mentioned about the five hundred and five acres.
That's, yeah, that is any size. So there's no limit as a commercial kennel, but there is, there are certain places that you can do it and you have to do a special permit with site plan review. Under the definitions? So you got, your personal kennels is...
Why is it separated from the article?
These are definitions.
But it's not even with article seventeen. It moved over to article eighteen.
Yeah, seventeen and eighteen are two separate things. Because you're amending the use table, it was recommended, I believe, by council to separate those. And then even article nineteen gets into kennels where it specifies special permit.
Again, they seem to be in the wrong order. You would think you'd want the definitions in there before you have the, the scheduling of uses.
Well, the schedule uses is after definitions.
The definitions...
Definitions are seven, the uses are six.
In the warrant, it's seventeen eighteen.
Oh, in the wa, oh, oh, okay.
The other way, it's, it's the other way.
Yeah, I don't know why in...
In the cover memo, it's...
I don't know why it's different in the cover memo. That's, I was confused by that, Steve, sorry.
So if you have four dogs and one has a puppy, once the puppy's three months old, they need a special permit?
Yes, or get rid of the puppy or one of the dogs.
Who's gonna monitor this stuff?
The neighbors.
We're looking for volunteers.
The neighbors will monitor it.
It's like anything else. It's, no one notices it until it's out of control, so once it's out of control, then someone can say, you know, you're not supposed to have more than four.
That's what it's made for. I don't think you'll even have an issue if somebody has five dogs if they're well kept and quiet.
It involves animals? I think it would be. It's just the way people are, is they, either they love or hate animals.
Yeah.
I can, I know it's ten to ten, but I have a, I think there's a comma missing. Okay?
It's pretty impressive you can catch that at ten to ten, but I...
Read, read, "commercial boarding or training kennel"?
What page you are, what...
She's on...
I'm on article seventeen. I haven't even gotten to the use table yet. I'm still on this commercial kennel. I'm trying to make sure that my, when my, when my dog goes to visit with his neighbors because we're out of town, she's not gonna be called a commercial ten, kennel.
She'd have to want to be called a commercial kennel, right?
She's, she's, she's just babysitting.
She might be violating the personal kennel.
Well, that's what, so it gets down to at the very, very end, an individual who temporarily and not in the normal course of business boards or cares for animals owned by others, okay? That's her, okay? It shall, so, so, reading back, reading back, go to the, go to one, two, three, four. The, the phrase begins at the semicolon on the, on the line four. It starts with provided however that the commercial kennel shall not include... It shall not include a series of things. It shall not include the animal shelter or the control facility, comma, the pet shop, so described, comma. A grooming facility operated solely for the purpose of grooming and not for overnight boarding, comma, that's the comma that's missing. Or an individual who temporarily and not in the normal course of business boards or cares for animals, and that's my neighbor.
Actually, I think that comma is good both ways. I think you can have or have not. When the last preposition, or a series of phrases, you're spread, you can have a comma or not.
The thing that was throwing me off...
In deference to Andrea, we're gonna put the comma.
Yes, yes.
Well, the thing that was throwing me off is that because it said...
It was two.
And it exists...
Two commas in there just in case.
But the thing that was throwing me off is the grooming facility operated solely for the purpose of grooming and not for overnight boarding or an individual. So is it and/or is the individual now the grooming facility? So that was what was throwing me off.
I would go with the extra comma.
The extra comma never hurts.
Although it's not illegal to have none.
I tend to overcom, overcommas.
I, I just, I just think zoning is complicated.
Tend to overcommasate.
Overcommasate.
Overcommasate, yeah.
So nobody else had that problem reading that?
I terrible lost an accent. I wanna say overcommor. I wanna say overcommor.
Thank you. I thank you.
Moving on quickly here.
Yeah, to overcommor.
Well...
You got a comma?
No, I get more than a comma. D, D two D says agricultural uses and D two D five B is a subset of that. If it is an agricultural use... of that. If it is an agricultural use and it is on five or more acres of land, it's a Dover amendment use, and you can't have a Dover amendment use by special permit. They're permitted by right.
What does that mean?
Agricultural uses.
Yeah, but is our dogs...
It's not a Dover amendment, but it is an agricultural exemption.
Are dogs, breeding dogs considered part of farming?
I don't know, but we put it under an agricultural use in the organization.
He's suggesting we don't want it in the agricultural use.
I don't think they consider raising dogs agricultural use.
I agree with you.
Special category.
It's been put under, in here as an agricultural use.
Sort of.
Yeah.
And you can't do that by special permit on five acres or more.
Because this kennel is only for, this kennel is only for dogs. It's not for, it's not for gerbils, and it's not for ferrets. Only for dogs.
Or cats. I mean, why, why just swipe, just pick it on the dogs?
Dogs bark.
Cats scratch.
And they leave a mess.
And meow and stink and...
Really? Dogs are a nuisance because they bark.
So is there another place to put it? Because I...
That's the driver.
I thought this was, because we're talking about pigs.
This is the article of the summer of 2014. How many meetings have we spent in this, Walter?
Everyone wants to add...
No, I don't, no. I just thought that, I just, I, even, even I heard something about pigs.
Actually, D2D5 falls under residential uses.
Chickens.
Why is it agricultural here?
I don't know.
Chickens are good.
They are good, but so are dogs. So are dogs.
D2D5. No, it's under agricultural.
It is under agricultural.
It is. Look down the middle of the table there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I looked at the top.
A little indenting would help on this paper.
The existing bylaw has it by a special permit. That's not, that's, can't fly.
And are they teaching them how to bark?
Well, that's why it's written like that. It's because it was there under agricultural uses.
It's also committed to as two years, huh?
You know that rats are smart enough to come when they're called by a name? I haven't believed that, but that's what they're promoted, yes. They're very smart and trainable.
Well, the, the real problem I have, you can restrict agricultural uses, and I guess you could do it by special permit, but you can't do it on five acres or more. And we put it in here as five acres or more. We're lying in the face of Foddy A here.
You can add an asterisk with an exemption as, as provided in Section Three of Section 40A, and then that, that covers, if it's, if it's covered under the agricultural exemption, then that, that will exempt it. And if it's not, then it, then it applies.
But how could it, how could it not be if it's on five acres or more and it's, we're labeling it as a, an agricultural use?
But regardless of what we label it as, if it's not defined as an agricultural use...
Yes, mhm, right, right. There's a higher authority that determines agricultural use, right. And then everything else kicks in.
So where else could it go other than under agricultural use?
Commercial uses.
Yeah.
I like the asterisk idea.
Yeah, but what about when it's personal, then it's not commercial anymore? Oh, what this one is...
It could be a residential use, couldn't it?
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah. So a personal kennel could fall under residential.
A commercial boarding, yeah, it is. It says right in there, commercial. So we'll just move it down to commercial uses.
Yeah, that seems to fit within the definition of it and...
Yeah, that's fine.
Did per, did, did personal kennels stay in agricultural use?
No.
No, that's got to move.
That's going to move too.
I think that's a residential.
Yeah, we said residential on it, didn't we?
Yeah.
Residential.
Well, it's not just residential because it's in the R district, the B2 to B4.
But the category of it.
Why, why are personal, why do we have personal kennels in, in the commercial and business districts?
Because people may live in a commercial or a business district, and in spite of what the zoning says, they have a residential use there.
So maybe it's been rezoned or, you know, somewhere around them, but they're grandfathered or something.
Some of these, I, I agree with, I agree with that conceptually, but in some of these zoning districts, we actually had a map. We, we, there are only like one or two lots, and so we know what's in there already. So...
Where do we have accessory uses?
Do you know what I'm...
There's nothing stuck in...
I disagree with that. That is more than one or two lots that are residential uses in our commercial zones.
Well, what's C6? Is C6 the airport?
C6?
C6, no. C6, I believe, is up towards Norfolk.
Southwood, C6.
C6 is Southwood, okay. Isn't the airport one of the C, one of the C districts?
B, it's B2, I think.
B2? Okay, I'm at a, I'm at a disadvantage. I haven't seen the zoning map in a while.
You should have one. I should have it committed to memory, I know. No, 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 we should have one hanging. I see.
All of B1 district has residential use.
B1 I know does, but some of these are smaller zones.
No, I think the airport was rezoned back to residential.
Okay.
It was a B district.
Yeah. Like where Tommy DePlacido is doing his development, the, the River's Edge, that's a C4 district.
Okay.
That whole area.
Yeah.
That has C4. Okay.
Right to the line.
I can't imagine anyone starting a kennel there.
So all of these, you're looking at the map, and all of these districts have some residential ability. Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
It was the airport that was throwing me off.
You got enough direction to straighten this out?
Do you know the airport's been purchased?
Yeah, I think so.
The marijuana treatment center?
No.
Shall we move on to that one?
Open space.
For commercial, I mean, for, for open space?
Oh, that's good. That's good, okay.
Who purchased it?
A unknown entity.
An environmentalist.
For, for commercial, I mean, for, for conservation uses. Oh, only.
Next, Ray.
Yeah, medical marijuana uses, Article 21.
What happened to 19?
That was part of this whole kennel discussion.
Okay.
And what that does is just specifies that a special use permit is allowed, is required for kennels, commercial boarding and training, or kennels, commercial breeder. Twenty is also kennels. Twenty-one?
Twenty is also kennels?
Yeah, it's a personal kennels.
Oh. So this marijuana one is mostly just crossed out?
It's a cross-out, and then it's a replace. So we're crossing out, getting rid of the temporary moratorium language.
Yeah.
And replacing it with registered marijuana dispensary language. Essentially, what you've got is, is you've got a state law that changed, and we're trying to comply with that state law. We've got some lots in the industrial area that would allow us to point to those areas and say, this is the only place in town where you can do it. There's some definitions in here about registered marijuana dispensaries and how the whole thing goes together, who can do what.
It looks like there's a highlighted section here. Was there something you wanted to call our attention to?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's some sort of analysis, a transportation analysis that's supposed to be done.
Yeah.
And the language that we had stolen it from, a place that we'd stolen it from, apparently had a director of planning and development and a director of transportation.
Yeah.
So we have a DPW director and a town planner. We can, we can amend that language to use those two titles, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Adult Business and Marijuana Overlay District.
They're all in the same spot?
Mm-hmm. Right now, there's not a real push to have these things in Norfolk. The more urbanized areas are...
Well, of course.
Are getting them. But it'll, there'll be a trickle down eventually.
There might be, so why not protect ourselves?
Yeah.
It's a larger article.
We had somebody come in and ask about putting up one of these facilities, so there is interest.
Oh, someone actually...
Yeah, a local, local person that happens in here once in a while and asks questions about zoning. I think he might be more hopeful than an actual person that's going to do it, but...
Wasn't one of the state license, wasn't there a state license application for Franklin?
Yes, and it was approved. But everything's held up now, anyway.
All right. All right, I, I don't see anything else to correct in this one.
This is straight out of, it's been adopted by another town or city, and it's been approved by the AG as complying with the law.
Now we need to talk about street numbering, right?
Well, we have to close the hearing and...
We still got street numbering. Open, open with it, unless you close a whole...
It's not on this, though. It's not on the public... Oh, is it a paragraph? I'm sorry, it wasn't a number. Sorry.
This came up because of the village at River's Edge, right?
Right.
Yes.
And when the public safety people get in there, they can't quite figure out where they're supposed to be because they can't read the numbers. Well, the numbers are not consecutive, let's put it that way, right?
They start on one side and go all the way through the development and come back out the other side. So you could have one and 100 across the street from each other.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
Sure. So it goes one, two, so it's odd and even?
So it starts on the left side, goes all the way down, just goes all the way down, comes back around on the right side, and you could have 100 across the street from one.
Which is what we don't want to happen in the future.
So this would give you a uniform system of, and this, really, you give to the applicants to say, this is how we'd like to see the streets numbered, the homes numbered.
Well, in subdivisions, we usually go through and we have a circle there for us to fill in the, the number. But is it because this was a site plan that they just did their own numbering?
They did numbering based on units. So they had, each unit had a number. And I think there was just an oversight as to whether that was the numbering system that we use, and it just got adopted.
They were counting houses, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, they were just counting them.
So you floated this in front of us before. Has this changed materially since then?
Not at all.
I'm fine with it then?
I remember catching something at the time about who administered it. Now it's administered by the planning board.
Well, I, I remember, I always remember it being, on subdivisions, it being administered by the planning board. That's where all the numbers came from throughout the town, because we always had a little circle put on the, the plan to put the, the house number on.
And that's the appropriate place to do this. You know, we work with the, the tax assessor's office on the numbering system, you know, almost a double check to make sure that we're, we're not missing something. But it's appropriate to have it at the planning
Probably because it was a site plan that this happened.
It could be. I mean, it's guessing at this time.
So that would be the only article that the planning board would be proposing for the warrant? We don't have any other articles?
No, this actually is a...
Oh, it's just an amendment to...
Amendment to your rules and regulations.
I see.
So this does not go on the warrant.
It is on the left side of the street. We'll have odd numbers.
So it doesn't get voted on?
Yeah, you would vote on it.
It'll usually start with one, two.
No, no.
Or do they start with one, two?
The subdivision regulations, rules and regulations are the planning board's per view.
Yeah, odds on the right, I think.
It depends on which way, left and right, depending which way you go down the street.
Well, you're starting at one, starting at one. Don't start at 105 and come down to one. Oh, they're all, the odds are on the, the left side of the street.
For a cul-de-sac, it's clear, but a through street, you could start from either end, right?
And that's where it gets tricky, is you gotta pick the right street and go the right way. It could be tricky if you have two roads that meet.
Yeah.
You know, we have Frederickson coming in.
Yep.
And the extension of Frederickson, and you're coming into that other road that you can't remember the name of it.
Well, she should know, it's right off of her street.
You got two different named roads.
When does Frederickson come in on the other side?
So we have to terminate those, but be conscious of that termination.
Oakview Terrace.
Oakview Terrace, yeah. So that, that would be a situation. If Oakview Terrace was also called Frederickson, that could pose some real problems for us.
Yeah.
But my street is numbered the way he's written it here.
Oh, really?
Fruit Street. You go up Fruit Street, all the even numbers on the right and the odd numbers on the left.
We're just discussing whether or not it's odd on the right or odd on the left.
The numbers go up. I mean, so you start down...
It's because it wasn't a subdivision. It was a post office. Somebody must have laid it out.
E911 came through and did a lot of changes, too.
It can go on a circuit, so you get one and 100.
Yeah, that's important.
And that's what this is based on, is that...
But this will not allow that, yeah.
Michelle, I apologize. You were right. We should do two separate motions, one for the, the bylaw changes and one for this, so...
First, we have to close the hearing before we vote.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody object to that?
No.
I second it.
All those in favor?
I close the hearing.
And then I'm going to make a motion that we, we don't necessarily approve them because they're not our articles, but that we support.
You have to make a report to the town meeting, and most planning boards will indicate whether it's favorable or unfavorable, so...
Well, the motion could be to make a favorable report on all of these or whatever.
So I'd make a motion that we, that we do that, that we vote to say that we were in favor of all the proposed articles with the modifications that we suggested tonight, the minor modifications.
Do we have to vote on them individually?
No.
No? Oh, okay, good.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thirdly, I make a motion that we accept the proposed amendment to the uniform street numbering system as part of the rules and regulations for a subdivision of land.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, chief.
Could I, in the future, could we get these sooner?
Yeah, yeah, I'm surprised you didn't have them sooner.
They did have an earlier date on them.
What's that, the zoning?
The warrant stuff.
It's okay. I didn't get them either.
It would have been nice to have had them before tonight.
I'm all new to this process, and there's, there's certain nuances that I have not learned yet.
Yeah, got it.
All right, moving on. Getting late.
Well, is there, is there anything left that we have to get done tonight?
Oakno Estates permit extension.
Oh, yeah.
I've been looking for one of those.
There's a letter from Gil Baxberg on the Oakno. I'm looking for a one-year...
What's the request for Oakno?
He's looking for a one-year extension.
We had extended it last year. His special permit's good for a year. And we gave him a one-year extension last December.
Yeah.
So he's requesting another. Does anyone have any objection to granting a one-year extension to Oakno Estates?
Were we extending it to next December or next September?
Well, we have a date here, right?
Did I put a date in there?
Oh, December 6th, 2012.
Is it covered under the State Extension Act, anyway?
He must be going through December 14, right?
What was the first one issued?
December 6th, 2012.
That was, if it was, yeah. That was, if it was, yeah, then it's after, it was, it ended August of 2012.
2012, right.
So we just missed it. Right, yeah, okay, so we need the extension.
So, do you want to make a motion for that extension?
But, but what is, we need to just know the date, because it's one thing to extend it a year from now, but if he-
No, December 6th, it's a year from December 6th, it's gonna expire on December 6th.
Oh. So he's only getting three months' extension? December 6th, 2012, so we're extending it for 15 months?
Yeah.
Not 12 months?
Well, we're extending it from the date it expires. He's requesting it a month before it expires.
December 6th, 2014 to-
Three months before, or two months before.
Oh, it's October now.
That's good planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, get a problem with that?
We're not extending 14, we're not extending 14 months, we're extending 12 years, 12 months. And by the way, plan is not a four-letter word.
You can extend it for five years if you want to.
Yes.
I just, it just occurred to me, too, I think his subdivision approval, which is good for two years, I think that is expiring, so I'll have to have-
Yeah, let them know.
Ask for an extension on that.
Find out the date on that, see if it was August.
If you want to hold off, we'll do that next-
Could you just grant the extension now?
Do it all at the same time? Okay, as long as we don't forget-
Couldn't you just do it right now? If you know that it's expiring, why couldn't you just grant the extension?
He has to request us to extend the, our approval.
He does.
Okay.
Well, a planning board can modify or repeal or do anything to a subdivision on its own volition, so you actually could do a subdivision if you wanted.
I thought that we had always had a request.
I think you think especially, I'm thinking the definitive subdivision, when you start that public hearing process, there's that, that process which I, in my mind, doesn't make sense that the applicant asks, or grants the planning board the extension, but-
Well, because if he doesn't grant the extension, we would just deny.
Right.
So of course they're gonna ask for an extension.
I understand, it's counterintuitive in my mind.
So, are you, do you want to make the motion?
Do we want to take it upon ourselves to extend their subdivision approval, or do we want him to request us to extend his subdivision approval? Does it matter to you?
It does no harm if we extend it right now.
I see no harm.
Okay, so it makes no harm, so if you want to make the motion for both of those. What's the date that we're looking for for the subdivision approval? What date does it expire?
December 6th.
Hold on one quick sec, I-
We'll add one year to that also.
You could use the date of the expiration on both, because-
One year from the date of approval, or?
Expiration.
One day, yeah.
I'd set both of them to the same day, whatever it is, so that they'll run together.
Yeah, makes it easier.
Going forward.
So helpful.
Where do you get these ideas?
Well, that's why they sit me in a corner.
Subdivision approval is good for two years, and the special permit was good for one year. Oh, no, if it was December of 2012, that was two, oh, it was already extended once.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so they, they probably are both expiring around the same time.
I thought I did pretty well with that widening out the right-of-way.
Yeah.
That was a really creative one.
That was clever, yeah, I liked that.
I didn't see that in your back pocket.
That was approved November 15th, we filed with the town clerk on November 19th, 2012.
So December, sounds like the date you want to choose.
Yeah.
Okay, so we choose the date of December 6th for both, is that what you're saying? Okay. Then I move to extend the special estate lot permit for Oak Knoll Estates from December 6th, 2014 to December 6th, 2015. And to extend the subdivision approval from November 15th, 2014 to December 6th, 2015. That's a one-year extension, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's that one.
What is it that's holding up the Sandy Knoll Estates, too? Do you remember what's holding that up?
Sign a lender's agreement.
The owner was on vacation for this meeting. He'll be back on November 5th, he'd be happy to meet with us at our November meeting.
13th, okay.
13th.
Okay. Bristol Pond Estates. There's a request for a release of more lots at Bristol Pond Estates.
Two lots sits here.
Right. How many lots are left over there?
He has... Quite a few, actually.
We're talking about, why is he having lots released two at a time when the road, the whole roadway is bonded in full? Does he have any advantage to that?
He, I did ask him, he just thought, he didn't know and just thought that that's the way it was done. There are one, two, three. There are nine lots left.
Jeez.
It would only help him if he only had part of the roadway bonded, but we just got the whole roadway bonded, we could ask for all the lots.
Yeah, I did have him give me another, another, a, um, another one. I wasn't sure, so.
Well, does anyone have any objection to releasing lots 10 and 13 in Bristol Pond Estates?
No.
No.
I assume, are they both residential lots?
Yes. Yes. These are the ones that are on Marshall Street.
We did have a call from a resident in Bristol Pond.
We did?
Talking about the promises, yes. Town board member, actually, asking to see if we could get any leadway in clearing up the subdivision. I guess there's a lot of scattered debris from road construction around the cul-de-sac area and other parts. He talked about it being unsafe because there are no sidewalks at all and no streetlight. And he talked about, before my time, past promises from the developer to start to add to the landscape, which is pretty much barren now in the entranceway. And I guess this all transpired sort of when this neighbor gave him a waiver on an extensive stone wall that was in the plans, a field stone wall, going up the left-hand side of the subdivision. So the neighbor was concerned with the children in the area now, that there's a lot of piled road construction debris that he'd like to see removed. And he talked about having the sidewalk put in the streetlight. I had simply mentioned to him that I understand the cleanup, but I don't know if we can really make him put the sidewalk in where it's all bonded.
No, I, yeah, it's bonded.
Yeah. But I think the cleanup being, being a nuisance could be another issue.
Did this gentleman speak to this fellow here?
He shouldn't have to.
I don't know, he spoke to myself, he spoke to Ray. And I think, I think he did not.
Well, then we should just delay the release of the lots and let him know that we're delaying the release of the lots until the debris in the road, is it in the roadway?
Yes.
Debris in the roadway on the, in the cul-de-sac? Which end of the cul-de-sac, there's two cul-de-sacs.
He didn't specify, perhaps both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But I did go up there, and I think that a lot of the shoulder area off the roadway is not stabilized. And I know that that should have some type of stabilization to stop the runoff into the basins and all that, so. That might be in our jurisdiction.
The shoulder isn't stable, it-
Well, there's no sidewalk, so you've got the pavement, and then it's just be a gravel, there's no-
Oh, okay.
I believe, that's what he said, so. So I'm not sure exactly what you can have him do.
Well, let's just get it cleaned up before we release the lots. Just let him know that we'll release his lots after he cleans up the cul-de-sacs, because there's a lot of construction debris.
Do you want to schedule a meeting for December 9th at the same time? We have, the 13th, we scheduled, but we didn't, we didn't do the next meeting?
December 9th is fine, I guess. I have no trouble with December 9th.
Tell you in a minute, since I fire up the phone here.
Is that Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
Discuss the draft open space and recreation survey. I think I read that.
96, you did.
Yeah.
96?
This is essentially the same survey that was done in 96, but updated with new facilities that are, that are added in. Yeah, the, the airport property is going to be deleted from this because the owner did not want it listed, yet, until they figure out what they're gonna do. So, but everything else is pretty similar. The thought was to get this, get any comments you might have and get it distributed at town meeting. That would be a good place to get a lot of people to fill it out who are interested, motivated on town, town issues. It also will be online, so people will be able to answer it that way, listed on the town website. And, and then we'll go from there, the next step-
Who's the one that's compiling this information? Is it Recreation that's doing this?
CPC-
CPC.
Is the, is the force behind it.
At a previous town meeting, we allocated money to update the open space plan, so we're getting community-
So who would this be returned to, when it says, return this?
Yeah, that hasn't been decided. I would think it would be somewhere in Town Hall here.
That makes sense.
Oh, well, that'd be good, if you wouldn't mind.
That would be ideal.
That's fine.
Preferably would be people to have completed online, that way it's easier to tabulate the results.
Yeah. Are we gonna have a link?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Is this something you do with a Survey Monkey, or one of those websites?
Yeah, exactly.
Survey Monkey.
That's what it's called, it's called Survey Monkey, that's the name of the company.
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of them, but that, that's a very popular one, that's probably the one we're gonna use.
All right, I, if this is the same one as 96, then I seem, and it doesn't look like there's an awful lot being changed.
No, the thought was this way, you can track, you know, how, whether attitudes have changed since then.
Yep, this looks good to me.
We had a pretty good percentage turnout then, we had like 27% or 23%.
Yeah, that's right.
So it was, if we do that well again, we really can say something.
So we are scheduled for the December 9th meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay, don't forget, town meeting, November 18th and 19th.
Yep.
As your reminder.
Yeah. Will we see the changes in the zoning for the next meeting so we can write our letter of recommendation?
Sure.
Okay, the RFP for consultant contract. I'm not gonna get into a huge discussion of this, did everyone read these? Did they compare them with the old one?
I did.
Okay.
What did it say?
Basically, the difference between them.
Oh, the old one, I mean, the old one was the template, right?
Right, the old one was, I didn't realize how good that old one was until I reread it, and I thought, oh my God, whoever put this together for- It wasn't me when I was on the board at the time. But, but you did a good job incorporating everything. The only changes that have been made to the RFP is to add sections that incorporate the ZBA, because they use the same consultant that we use now. So they've incorporated ZBA criteria and everything in here.
So this is a separate, this is a separate contract from the Board of Health? It just so happens that it's the same agent? Okay. Why did we, is it just on a different schedule? Is there a reason why we didn't want to have one contract for everybody, for all boards?
The Board of Health did their own, prior to me coming here. And we had noticed that this contract had been extended and extended. I think the planning board asked me if we can extend it again. I, in looking at the state, what do they call it, is, it's not a bylaw, but it's a state guidebook.
Statute, yeah.
Statute, it said, you can't extend it any more than, I think, once. And it's usually, it's three years and you're pretty much up. We do one more extension after that, I believe it was for three years, we've been beyond that. So it was time, essentially, it was time to do it.
This section right here, where, you know, you've got the heading here, criterion, not advantageous, advantageous, blah, 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 blah. You've got that stuck in the middle of the chart again, right here. I don't think that's necessary.
Oh, okay, I can fix that. Yeah, you know what happened was, the pages moved.
Yeah. So, I had just, I wasn't following it, because it went from section one to section two, and then it jumped to 4.1, and then at the bottom of the backside of page one, it looked like it just trailed off, the sentence.
I gotta catch up to you.
But did I, is mine like out of order or something?
Oh, so you're saying the numbering is out of, out of sequence?
The numbering was out of sequence, but then I-
Yeah, there's a couple of pages missing.
Yeah, page one, the backside.
Yeah, let me check on that.
The paragraph just kind of ends and doesn't match to what starts on page three.
All right, let me check on that.
So I, it felt like I sort of missed some pages.
Oh, see, I'm working on one that I typed, I printed off of my email, so I didn't look at the one that was handed out to me.
Well, that's a good, good check against the one we've got here in front of us. So let's see, yeah, did we lose a couple of pages along the way?
That's what I'm wondering.
I think this is all due to Walter's edits, which caused me all kinds of trouble.
Well, you did, you lost some pages along the way, that's the issue, okay, I got it.
I was shortening it.
Ah, several pages, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe in photocopying, something got messed up, yeah.
Do you want to take my copy?
Yeah.
Do you want me to just hand you my copy?
I'd like to look at it, because I-
There's three, three pa, there you go, three pages that were left out.
Missing pages?
Yeah, okay.
Can I take a peek?
Sure.
So it's otherwise the same, the dollar value and the year.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that page didn't get done.
Oh, hey, it was double-sided, I didn't know.
Yeah, good job.
It was my fault.
What's the term of this contract?
More than three pages, huh, left out?
No, it was, it was a double-sided document, and then she-
I've done that myself, totally get it now.
Is it three years?
You're missing all the even-numbered pages. Yep.
Is it three years, this contract's three years?
Yeah.
Where does it state that, I just, um-
It's on the one of the pages that's missing.
It's on the missing page.
It's on the what?
One of the missing pages.
Pages you don't have. I'm trying to find it now.
Well, he knows it's three years.
What you guys had sent out to you by email was correct. This is just a photocopy that got messed up today.
Yeah, there could be, there could be other changes, but I, what I saw, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, I have no issue with, I, the only correction I had was that one that I just showed you.
Yeah, yeah.
I can correct that one, it's fine.
Okay, do we have any meeting minutes that we have to?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Fifteen of them?
John's got a bunch there.
A bunch?
A lot of them predate me.
Well, then you're not the one that should be asking for it, you should not, you're not the one that should be reviewing them.
Well, there's, there's a combination of John and me. I've got the first one.
The meeting, the minutes from the last one are there.
Say again?
The September 18th minutes are there.
Mm-hmm.
I think John reviewed-
Which I was absent at.
Who was?
Me.
Do you have vouchers that you have to have aside?
I do.
Anybody have any changes, I can move to accept the 18th minutes. I can move to accept the eighteenth minutes.
Yeah, just, I just said, just said that.
Andrea wasn't here.
All right, move to accept the planning board minutes for September eighteen, two thousand and fourteen with one adjustment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What was the adjustment, John?
Andrea was absent.
Striking Andrea. Andrea?
And I think the last one here is two eleven. Yeah? Okay. All right, I move to accept the minutes of the February eleventh meeting, the eighteenth of March meeting, the eighth of April meeting, the fifteenth of April meeting, and the twenty-ninth of April meeting.
No corrections.
With no corrections. I've read them.
Can somebody, on the eighth, on the fifteenth? Can somebody?
Where are you?
At the adjournment of the meeting?
April fifteenth.
Can somebody recall seconding the motion? Somebody being either Michelle or Walter or Steve, because you were there.
See it?
I see it.
Okay. We, we went back and forth on this. I've put my name in there, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, so that was a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to defer on the twenty-ninth because, April twenty-ninth, because I don't recall that meeting, but this was the zoning. And there's no discussion at all on these articles. And I sort of thought there might have been. On article twenty-seven.
Jeez, I can't find that, the one you're referring to. Why can't I find it? April twenty-ninth. April twenty-ninth, is that what you're referring to?
April twenty-ninth. This is one, this is one of the ones where we were talking about, we were talking about zoning and Peter recused himself and I just think, I just have a remember, I just thought, I can't remember if this was one of the quiet zoning public hearings, but we didn't have a lot of quiet zoning public meetings, so I don't remember that this was, this was it. So I'm just not going to vote on it. Does anybody, anybody know what I'm talking?
I do. There should, yeah, I'm sure there's more conversation than what was, what's written here.
All that's written is that Peter recused himself and then we made a motion.
Yeah. You made a motion for, for April twenty-ninth.
Beheld.
Yeah, so I'm just going to try to amend that motion to remove the April twenty-ninth meeting from the list that you want to have approved. Because I want Betsy to go back and see if there was any commentary that could have, that should be added in.
Very well. Do you have a second to remove it?
Do, I do.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So let's go back and just vote to approve the other ones.
Right.
Walter has requested having them approved. Okay, so he's made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. I abstain.
There's two vouchers and then the top one is just the colonial fence decision. Signature page.
The one we talked about earlier, yes, okay.
Any other new business? Anyone been to any side meetings that they want to report about?
Well, I was, I was saying.
CDC or something like that.
Yeah, I was saying, I was saying earlier that the airport did get purchased by a private entity. And now we've got this community, this open space plan getting done. That's all that's going on at CPC.
On Fruit Street there, where Chris Galasso is building that new building, what is that?
I, I assume it's, I can, I can assume what, what it is, but I don't know for sure.
Well, it looks like it's able.
Oh, it's an underground house.
It looks like it's able to hold a lot of construction equipment.
Yeah, I think it's his business.
In the winter.
No, it's going to be a house.
Plus a house.
Plus a house. Plus a house, yeah, okay.
Do you know the architect?
No.
We did stop, the Conservation Commission stopped him from working as a farm until he has a farm management plan.
Okay.
He was actually.
This is yours. I don't want to walk away with it.
I wouldn't let you. And going to fill it to make it easier to cross with his equipment and doing all this other things. And they finally admitted that they had no farm management plan, which they have to have completed and approved by Conservation to be classified as a farm. So he's off doing that. In the meantime, he's not touching anything in the resource area.
Is, does he have a time limit that he has to, does he have to produce something in this time period because he's sixty-one?
He has to produce something before he starts working in a resource area.
No, no, I know he has to produce the plan. What I'm saying is, does the land have to generate income as a farm in every calendar year?
I believe it has to produce a thousand dollars in gross revenue each year.
So I think this could be a tight year for him.
Yeah. And what did he do down the end of the street there, on, on the Cleland Street side? It looked like he tore down a whole bunch of trees and. Yeah, that's what he was doing, some reconstruction work in the buffer zones. Okay. Was it, what was he putting in? A retention basin or something? I'm not sure. Yeah, okay. I don't think it was retention basin though.
Jeez, I haven't been over there. I haven't seen any of this.
I got, I got an idea of what it is, but I, I've never talked to him directly either. I spent.
I don't think the so-called Bondi's Building is for animals. Just a guess.
I was thinking it's just, I think it's just going to be trucks.
Do you want to sign one?
Food grains, things like that.
The, this, this zoning came out of, these zoning articles came out of that group that was established to discuss stuff? Nothing for Southwood came out of it?
Not ready.
Southwood is still in the middle. They have filed with Conservation.
Lots more work to do.
Okay.
Before that's ready.
Okay, because at one point it was going to, he was looking to have something in, in November meeting, but he's aware of what's.
I think he was more hopeful than looking.
He was unaware of the, of the cutoff date at which point the warrant freezes.
Yeah.
And he didn't have enough time to do what he needed to do.
I think you only need three.
To get any articles in the fall.
I mean, we're working on spring.
Discussions are still going on.
Yes.
So with this group, does it look positive towards the Southwood property or does it look as though it's kind of sketchy?
I think it's positive.
I think it's positive now. I think he's got direction. And the direction here, it's kind of hard to get him in line with what we wanted initially, but.
Is it scaled down a little bit?
He's now moved forward and we have the potential of having in the range of five hundred units and virtually no children and increasing our affordable status by a hundred to a hundred fifty units by forcing him to have assisted living that's affordable, which means that if he builds a hundred assisted living units with twenty-five percent affordable, we have a hundred units counted towards our affordable housing units, getting us up halfway to ten percent then.
She's late, she's tired.
I know. Sorry.
She's got a pound.
He gets, if, if all of them would be affordable?
If he has a, if he, no, he's looking to do a combination of over fifty-five.
Yep.
Which produces no children.
Thank you.
We're asking him to do assisted living complex. Have the assisted living complex.
Be affordable?
Be affordable, twenty-five percent of them. And then all of the assisted living would count towards our ten percent affordable housing stock.
How does twenty-five get to a hundred?
Because when they're rented, twenty-five percent being affordable, all a hundred count.
Like the way I said that?
Which is how all these big towns are, all these big towns do apartment buildings.
I don't get the math, but that's.
That's why they do apartment buildings.
How's the apartment buildings? They do it because if they rent out twenty-five percent of their apartments at the affordable rates established by the state, all of the hundred percent of the units count towards the affordable quota.
Is that like, is that like bonus?
If you do twenty-five, yeah, it's a bonus. If you do twenty-five apartments in a hundred unit building.
All hundred count.
One hundred count as affordable.
That's, okay.
It's totally based on the form of ownership, which makes absolutely no sense.
So if we have him do a hundred and fifty affordability, which we're hoping, twenty-five percent of them are affordable.
It might change their minds by the time we're done.
That would be great.
It makes some sense.
That would be great.
And again, no children.
In his mind.
So it just took a while to get him in the direction we're looking for.
Yeah, the age restricted seems to sell here.
And I think that.
Want to encourage them.
Because you don't. To mention a name familiar.
Is looking at it?
Is looking to buy that portion from him. And they're looking in the range of two, they need density exemptions because it's zoned fifty-five now. But the numbers are talking, which is two hundred and twenty or so fifty-five and older units. You're talking the revenue if they build like in Canton where each one sells from the range of five, five fifty, you're looking at almost two million dollars in revenue without producing any extra children to school systems.
And this would not be reconstructing, not renovating the existing buildings, but raising?
Raising, raising both of them, yeah. They're coming down.
It'd be a site cleanup also.
Site cleanup is first.
But that was understood.
And also down.
I don't want to say it. It's just so, you never know, sometimes it's not understood.
Down on, on, on one A, there's a spot for the retail that would be more out on the road as opposed to buried in the middle of the complex. And there's even a remote possibility that there might be a hotel down there. He is looking for, what, Ray, a hundred to a hundred fifty apartment rentals. And I think we've.
That sounds like three or four stories.
We've sort of coerced him that if he does apartments, we would like them to be high-end just to generate the type of.
Not just one giant building.
Just to generate the type of tenants we want in the town. So he's actually going to, he said, let us participate in the design and the specs, et cetera, for the building. So he'd actually be forced to rent a better higher square foot price because of the cost of the building.
Is the, is the height restricted?
We have restrictions on height, so you couldn't.
It's the same?
Yeah. You couldn't go, I think it's forty, forty feet?
I think it's forty feet.
Yeah.
The same as B one, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Forty-six. Trying to make it so it's.
Forty-six if you had a peak roof.
An exclusive address where you can get some revenue and not have the problems that a normal apartment building might have.
Well, it sounds like you've been involved and Walter's been involved and Ray's been involved. It's good.
We spent two days on that and what, nine on kennels.
Okay. Are we all done?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent.